All right, so call to order, please.
Okay. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. I'd like to welcome all the guests joining us electronically to this first virtual meeting of Committee of the Whole. Thank you all for tuning in. I would like to take a moment to recognize it is Paramedic Services Week. Thank you to all the paramedics in our community for your hard work in keeping county residents safe during these trying times. Today's agenda lists all the items before council for consideration. The recommended motions on today's agenda are shown in boldface. Copies of the agenda have been posted on our website. This meeting is being recorded and will be on our YouTube channel. And any participation in the meeting proceedings will become part of the public record. The recording from this meeting will be published on the county's website immediately and can be viewed by selecting the streaming tab on the county's homepage at thecounty.ca. Under Agenda Item 5, there will be two comments from the audience today. Members of the public who wish to provide comments at future meetings can do so by contacting clerks@county.on.ca to register. Maximum time allotted for comments is thirty minutes. Your name will be included in the county minutes, council minutes, and form part of the public record posted to the county's website. Any motion made at this meeting is not final until the council meeting of June the ninth, 2020, at which time the council may approve, amend, defer, or otherwise change the motion made by this committee. As a matter of housekeeping in the event of fire, I don't believe that applies. Check your doors and exits safely on your own home. Please, as a reminder to all council members and anybody that is coming on, turn off your cell phones, turn off or mute, and as of our experience on Tuesday night, those that are coming to speak, please ensure that you shut off the YouTube stream and any other distractions that may be going on in your house so that we can hear you clearly move forward with this meeting in an efficient manner. So, having said all that, the agenda. Item number 2.1. Confirmation of the agenda, Counselor Prinsen, I believe that's your motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a Prinsen Harper motion that the agenda for the Committee of the Whole meeting of May twenty eighth, 2020 be confirmed.
All in favor? That's carried. Item three, disclosure of community, community area interests and the general nature thereof. Does anyone have anything to declare? Counselor Prinsen.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. I am declaring community interest on six point six, the report of the Finance Department regarding the primary assistance grant program. As I am a direct beneficiary and still classified as a young farmer.
Okay, anybody else? Hearing none, okay, thank you. Deputations. We have no official ten-minute deputations today?
Correct, Mr. Chair, we do not.
Thank you. So, item five point one. Members' comments from the audience, members of the public who wish to provide comments under Section 5 of the agenda. The first name I have here is Rachel Kuzmat regarding item six point five. Backyard chickens.
Hi, Rachel, welcome.
Hi, thank you.
Hi, Rachel, welcome. And I remind you that you have three minutes to speak to item five point, six point five.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon. First, I apologize for my rural internet if this gets choppy. And I want to speak today on the topic of keeping chickens in my backyard. I live in Black River, kind of close to the bridge. I can hear the construction going on right now. I have about a half acre. It's owned as rural residential, and that means I can't keep chickens. And I understand that this is probably a bylaw that was developed to keep large commercial operations out of residential areas. But given that many urban areas allow chickens, this seems a little outdated to have kind of an all or nothing policy. Like I mentioned in my comments, Kingston and Toronto both have programs, and there are many other municipalities as well. I also thought that having chickens for eggs is aligned with the county's declaration of a climate, climate emergency. Because local production obviously reduces transportation costs and other costs associated with having large factory farms and bringing that food, those chickens into the process. And I also wanted to note that I did begin this conversation way back in January before COVID was really what it is now. But I definitely think that in this new kind of climate or context that we're living in, obviously, food security and food access has been on a lot of people's minds. If you spend grocery stores lately, you see no flour and things like that. And eggs, many of the grocery stores have limits of one per person. So obviously, having the ability to keep your own chickens for eggs in your backyards is important for food security and food sovereignty. And I think it's important to remember that we're talking about these policies on the level of the municipality of all of Prince Edward County. But these food security issues really do play out in our individual households. I think it's important to empower those households to take control of their own food sovereignty. And that's the gist of my comments.
Okay, thank you. Don't go anywhere. Council members, is there anyone that has a question for Rachel? Okay, I see Counselor Hirsch. And did you have your hand up too, Councilor McNaughton?
We'll see where Counselor Hirsch goes.
Okay, Counselor Hirsch then.
Mr. Chairman, nice to meet you, Rachel, finally, even if it is only virtually. A question, question for you because you have some experience with this, and it was you who kind of brought the Kingston bylaw to our attention. Are there any issues other than roosters? And I gather that roosters are definite no-no because they're kind of noisy. Are there any issues with particular breeds of chicken in terms of not bothering other, other neighbors? Or is it, is it pretty much understood by those who keep chickens for eggs that there are particular species that, that work? Thanks.
Yeah, so there's not really any regulations in Kingston or other municipalities that I've looked at for specific breeds. But they do make often a distinction. We're not talking about poultry as a whole. We're not talking about turkeys and guinea hens and ducks or any other birds. We're really just talking about chickens for eggs and not roosters, as you noted. But I've not seen any policies anywhere specifying certain breeds. And in my experience with chickens, I haven't noticed any particular, you know, overly loud ones or overly quiet ones. They all kind of have a similar vocal range.
Councilor McNaughton, and then Counselor Roberts.
Thanks. Hi, it's nice to meet you as well, after the exchanges that we've had. You know that rural internet is on the agenda today too, right? Awesome. So, hope for you, I hope. And have, so you have kept chickens in the past?
Yes.
And you're planning to again in the future? Hopefully?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm planning to, yeah.
What do you think for backyards, for urban backyards, for sustainability, say for, for a couple? Is a good, is a sort of a good, the right amount of birds potentially?
Right. So Kingston is six, Toronto's pilot project is four, other places are eight, but six seems to be the general norm for most municipalities that I've looked at in Ontario. And like I said, I'm rural residential, so I obviously have more place, but I think even in places like Picton and Wellington, six birds is quite, quite reasonable for a couple. That would probably get you, you know, three to six on a good day for, for eggs. So I think that the average kind of household doesn't really need more eggs considering they're just providing for themselves.
Thank you.
Counselor Roberts, and then Bailey.
Hi, Rachel. Are there, in an urban setting, in an urban setting, are there any special precautions that we should be aware of with regard to raccoons, rodents, that kind of thing? I don't know much about backyard hens, although I do buy my eggs from a a very good farmer just down the road here. But I think they've had some issues with raccoons and things like that. So in an urban setting, what should folks be looking to do?
Yes, so I've definitely seen different municipalities, again, kind of handle this differently. Generally, they have a rule with distance from property lines. Kingston, I believe, has like a two-meter rule, so you can't have your coop immediately abutting your neighbor, and I think that's more the control for the fact that they defecate. But for the rodent issue, there's definitely, you know, if you have chicken wire and closed in area having a bottom board is something that some places have indicated so that there's minks in my area so that they can't get up and under into the coop. And but definitely, there are wild animals around here, and they are going to try to eat those chickens. But I don't think they're going to try to eat those chickens necessarily any more than they're going to try to eat anything else that's around here that's available. You know, I had my compost knocked over the other day. I don't know what knocked it over, but there's definitely animals around here, and we can definitely develop a policy or a bylaw that minimizes the risk of bringing in those rodents and keeping these areas safe and clean for the community.
Okay. Okay, I have Counselor Bailey and then Counselor McMahon.
Rachel, thank you very much for this. I started looking into this about two years ago. For somebody up in Preneers Cove, I think it's a brilliant idea. Do you have any issues with sanitation and smell? Depending on the number of chickens, is there more aroma? And what do you do with the poo?
Absolutely. And so six chickens would probably not produce more poo than a dog or a couple of cats. There are definitely policies to process that on an individual level. Again, if you're keeping something on the scale of, you know, four to eight birds, six-ish, you're not going to have too much that you can handle. But in terms of handling it, basically, you can turn it into fertilizer. So if you have a rain barrel or a compost bin that you can use for that, it needs to ferment. So basically, it needs to be left alone for about six months. And then that can be used as an additive, you know, in your gardens. So yes, they do defecate. Yes, you can develop policies to keep that clean. And policies for having a maximum number of chickens to kind of control the aroma. So again, you know, these are animals, they go to the washroom, but you can definitely develop solutions to minimize the potentially nasty smells. I did find a Toronto Star article that I kind of noted in my comments. Because that was a really big concern in Toronto, obviously, it's a highly dense area, and there's a lot of people in small quarters. But they noted in that Toronto Star article that they hadn't had any issues with the aroma or, or other issues either. So again, just something that can be controlled for.
Counselor McMahon. Have we lost Counselor McMahon? It looks like we've lost him.
Must be the rural internet.
We'll get him back if you want to go to them.
Are there any other questions for a member of council to Rachel? Okay. Do we want to give Counselor McMahon a moment? Madam Clerk?
Yes, please.
Then I will go back to Counselor McNaughton.
Catalina, is this a good opportunity while we wait for Counselor McMahon? Oh, he's back, never mind.
Counselor McMahon.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I just had some technical difficulties there. Thank Lord that this internet thing is coming up later. Can you still hear me?
You're good.
Okay. Yeah. Rachel, thank, thank you for your, your comments. It's very interesting. But I'm wondering, for some people who have never thought about the possibility of having chickens in their backyard, and you have some experience with it, if you're starting out with, say, the six chickens, what would the cost be for someone that might want to get involved in this? Is that prohibitive, or is that for everybody? You know, this may just be coming on the radar for people and go, oh, that's a great idea. But cost-wise, what's the downside or what's the upside?
Absolutely. And so you are going to have kind of that one-time cost of building a coop. Once you have it built, you need to maintain it. But, you know, the cost for building a coop can be kind of anywhere on the low end if you're using salvaged wood pallets, for instance, or old dockwood. You can start there and do it quite economically. Obviously, you can also go to the high end if you want to have the fanciest kind of coop possible. But that is going to be a one-time cost. And then beyond that, you're going to be buying feed, and you're going to be providing it water. The feed is going to be highly variable. Some people with larger rural residential properties may also enable their chickens to do a bit of free ranging. So they'll take care of the ticks in my backyard, hopefully. But you are going to be supplementing in the colder months with feed. In terms of cost at the outset, oh, and in terms of buying birds, that again is quite variable. If you're friendly with some of your, some of your neighbors who have chickens, it might be a gift to you. But I believe that, from what I've seen, kind of the average-ish cost for a backyard chicken is in the range of fifteen to thirty-ish dollars per bird. And then the cost of building the coop, like I said, if you're going all wood, if you're going all salvage wood or new wood, or depending on the dimensions you go, if you're probably not looking more than a few hundred dollars. If you want to build something really fancy, it could be more. But I don't think that that cost would be prohibitive to people. Perhaps right now it may be, but in a more general, non-COVID time, I don't think that it would be prohibitive.
Thank you.
Okay, any further questions from council? Counselor McNaughton?
This isn't actually a question for Rachel. It's a question for Catalina. Catalina, is now the right time to read the other letter on the public record?
Yes, as soon as Ms. Kuzmic is completed and she goes off, then we can move to Mark's comment, please.
Thank you. Oh.
Okay, is, so nothing further from council? Okay, then I'd like, oh, sorry, I see your hand waving there in space, Counselor Bolick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I think, I thank you for bringing this to us. We have backyard chickens. I think it's, it's a wonderful idea. I think some proponents were talking about rabbits too, so we should probably look at that. I mean, it's a great way of getting kids introduced to, you know, food production. Noise is not really an issue. Smell is not really an issue. They can be certainly dealt with. I think this, I am quite frankly surprised that we have to go through this. Being a rural farm-based community, why the heck we have to debate this is, is beyond me. But anyways, I wholeheartedly support this. Obviously, for people with concerns, we can craft a bylaw that would include a responsibility of whoever holds animals such as these to make sure that noise and smell abatement procedures are in place. But other than that, I'm, I'm wholeheartedly behind this.
Okay. I'll ask one more time. Any other further questions from council members? Okay, hearing none. Thank you very much, Rachel, for your presentation.
Thank you. It's nice hearing from you all. Perfect. Awesome. Thanks so much, everyone.
Okay, Madam Clerk?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Counselor McNaughton has a comment to read from a member of the public who wasn't able to virtually attend our meeting.
Okay, Counselor McNaughton, you have the floor.
Thank you. This is a letter from Mark Killen Bishop in Curran Place. Can you hear me? Dear council members, my name is Mark Killen Bishop, and I'm a resident of Emiliusburg Ward. I am the father of four young boys, and our family supports a rapid change in the bylaws to allow for backyard flocks of hens. As a longtime chicken owner, I'm aware that the benefit, I'm aware that the benefits to backyard flocks. In this time, more than ever, people are aware of the importance of food security. Chickens fit perfectly into an ecological way of living, taking care of compost and excess bugs such as ticks and turning them into food. In addition, flocks of chickens are great for mental health, educating kids about biology and more. Finally, I think it's important to acknowledge the importance of agriculture and homesteading in Prince Edward County's history. I hope that you will have the courage to move quickly and to approve a new bylaw. Frankly, this issue has been studied to death and doesn't require a lot of study or consultation. Sincerely, Mark Killen Bishop. County Road Three.
Anyone wish to comment on that letter? No? Okay, thank you very much, Counselor McNaughton. So if that is it for comments from the audience, I believe we require a motion to receive the comments from the audience. Could somebody make that motion? Counselor Prinsen, seconded by Counselor Roberts.
Sorry, who's my second? Robert?
Roberts.
So Prinsen Roberts motioned that we receive the comments from the audience.
All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Okay, so now we are moving on to item six point one, Items for Consideration. Report of the Clerk's Office dated May the twenty eighth, twenty twenty regarding amendment to the procedural bylaw to permit electronic participation. And that is a Margitson Bailey motion?
Yes, the Margitson Bailey motion. One, that report CL dash zero four twenty twenty be received for information. Two, that council approved the amendments to bylaw four four oh two dash two thousand nineteen being the procedural bylaw for the Corporation of the County of Prince Edward to permit electronic participation. And three, that a bylaw to amend bylaw four four zero two dash two thousand nineteen be brought forward and enacted at the June ninth, twenty twenty council meeting.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Margitson, with the wish to speak on the report.
Sure, I can provide just a brief overview. I think that as a council as a whole and staff, we've experienced the best of electronic participation as well as some of the challenges that it can have. But it is a fantastic option to allow for flexibility, especially should you have a deputant from a different municipality or different area who can present a deputation virtually, or if we have members of council, they can have that flexibility should they be on vacation when things open up again, or just away and not able to make it and would like to be home. They can still weigh in on an issue, but unfortunately, until the municipal act is changed, this is still during an emergency, it counts towards quorum, and you can vote. But not during an emergency, it doesn't count towards quorum, so you cannot vote. So you would be participating and providing your input, and same with committee members, but they would not be able to vote on a matter. So it is fantastic. We discussed, the CAO and I discussed options about perhaps only allowing it at Committee of the Whole because Committee of the Whole decisions are later ratified at council, and maybe not allowing it at council, and that's another option you can go with. But we thought it's better to let each council member and committee member ascertain for themselves whether or not they would like to use electronic participation provision.
Okay. Before I ask for questions, I will go to Madam CAO.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just add to what the clerk has said here. The reason for why now, why we brought this forward now, is that we have this permission to run meetings electronically, and whether it's with council or guests or at other committees, we're now starting the other committees. The report that went to council two days ago allowed for committees to restart with new terms of reference or refresh terms of reference. Right now, it's electronic participation is only a temporary bylaw that was enacted as part of us leading into the pandemic and the eventual municipal emergency. So as we think about eventually coming out of all of this, this is an attempt to codify the parts of it and the option in our procedural bylaw. So it would transfer it into a more permanent state. So that's the rationale for why doing it right now.
Thank you, Madam CAO. Questions of council members, for either the clerk or the CAO? Okay, I have Counselor Maynard followed by Counselor Hirsch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. The, on the question of restarting some of the other committee meetings. So is there, do they have to go through the same process that we are and have it recorded on Zoom? Because some of those meetings would not necessarily, I guess they're publicly broadcast, but what's the, what can we expect for a timeline for some of the other committees to, to get, to get up and going, or to have an ability to meet?
So my office is bringing forward a report either at the end of June or beginning of June, depending on what the agenda is looking like. That will permit an additional four committees to return and begin to meet. The committees on that docket are accessibility, cemeteries, traffic, and heritage, not heritage museums. Museums, we just did heritage. And so we are working through that right now. So, but we are ready and eager, and I know the committee members are, once you ratify the new terms of reference on Zoom nine, to get going and start meeting, especially environmental committee, agriculture. So we are in the works to make the plans to start to get those committees up and running electronically because they can, as per the the temporary change in the municipal act right now, since we are in an emergency.
And just a brief follow-up, if I may? So it's the hosting. Do they have to be hosted this way? You can't have your own independent Zoom meeting?
So sorry, I missed, I may have missed the beginning of your question, Counselor Maynard. I was having a little trouble hearing you, but we actually bought a Zoom license for boards and committee. So Housing Corporation has been utilizing it, and the Pixton Town Hall Board has utilized it. So we did just a quick training of the chairs to give them the password, how to use it, and then they are able to host their own meetings. So they don't necessarily need support from Clerk's Office or other staff members. They have that ability.
But do they have to be recorded for, as their public meetings? That's, I think, the crux of the question is, how do we? How do they become?
They don't. That is up to council, whether you would like that to occur. Right now, a procedure bylaw, it's only Committee of the Whole Council, Planning Public Council, and CDC that is recorded.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Maynard. I have Counselor Hirsch and then Counselor Nyman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Obviously, we have to do this. I think it's a great idea. But question perhaps for the CAO, do we, absent any change from Queen's Park, once the emergency is finished, we're back to having to have physical council meetings in some kind of a setting. Otherwise, electronic participation doesn't provide the ability to make quorum or have a vote. Do we have any sense as to whether the province is looking at amending the municipal act on a more permanent basis to allow these types of meetings?
So I have been talking to the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing senior staff, and that is something that they are considering. I think right now, there are so many provincial orders that are in place as they move through the I think right now, there are so many provincial orders that are in place as they move through the stages of recovery that it's very unlikely the provincial order will be lifted anytime soon. So that provides us, that provides, sorry, I'm having instability problems. That provides us with the ability to vote as long as there is a provincial order or a municipal order in place. So they, I would say they are looking into it, but not aggressively because they think they have quite a lot of time to worry about this, given that the provincial order will stick around for a while.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Nyman, followed by Council of Prinsen. I have you, Jamie.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just want to make sure I understand this. So basically, what we're trying to do is even when the emergency orders are gone, we're still able to have the Zoom meetings or virtual meetings for council committee of the whole and all the other committees. Is that my understanding?
So you, Mr. Chair, yes, that's correct. However, it would only count towards quorum during an emergency, whether it's a provincially declared emergency or a municipal declared emergency. So this is the provision that we would be exercising that many municipalities have been utilizing since 2018. So it would have to be that there be a schedule, that it be something that it used, that the ability to use it is like a one-off. It's not something that's going to be utilized because it doesn't count towards quorum where an emergency.
So, let's, can I have a follow-up tonight?
Yeah, go ahead.
My follow-up?
Council of Nyman, yeah.
Thank you. So I won't be supporting it because after Tuesday night's meeting, it's 75 minutes of frustration. I, I can't, I mean, we have to do it now, but to me, face-to-face meetings is more productive. And I know when I was out campaigning, I told the residents that, that you know what? I'll meet you because it's better to talk face-to-face and having face-to-face meetings is better than sitting behind the computer and just looking at the person's face. So I won't be supporting this because to me, it's just going back to, let's just go back to the face-to-face meetings when we can. And if a pandemic happens again, it's every hundred years that a pandemic happens, then we deal with it then. But, so I won't be supporting it.
Okay, Madam CAO would like to speak, and then we'll go to Council of Prinsen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to Council of Nyman. So just to clarify, and for the rest of council as well, this is a proposal that is beyond the actual Zoom meeting that we're having now in terms of council. It would allow for deputants or members of the public or guests who join our meeting to do so electronically, and it would also allow it at our committees to have members join. It's an enabling bylaw, not a requiring. So the idea is it's, it's allowing this as a possibility in our procedures where we are silent on them today, so therefore it's not allowed under our current rules. One of the reasons we're having this conversation at the Committee of the Whole and not council is to seek some feedback from council members because the, the way this could be, could also be more specific, and I think the clerk was trying to get to that in terms of the alternative options. It could be more specific to those who are guests and joining the meeting as opposed to council, the whole council meeting itself, or allowing a counselor on occasion. You know, maybe one counselor is in a personal situation, can't come in, is able to participate this way as opposed to the entire meeting happening virtually. So there are some, there's some flexibility there, but the bylaw is meant to deal with much more than just letting council itself happen electronically.
Council, Madam Clerk?
And just to build on what CAO said, this isn't replacing in-person meetings. It's only to enhance and provide an extra flexibility, layer of flexibility, should a member of council or a member of a committee need to use this. Because currently, the municipal act, unless there is an emergency, it doesn't allow for it to count towards quorum or voting. It's still, we would still need to have in-person meetings, regardless if this amendment passes or not.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Ferguson, followed by Councilor Forrester. Oh no, sorry, sorry. Councilor Prinsen, my apologies. I scratched you off before you spoke.
Thank you, Councilor St. Jean. Sometimes it's best, but I'm gonna throw this out here anyways. Okay, so I have an amendment I would like to put forward to this, to this motion. And that amendment reads that the clerk and CAO explore restarting meetings of councilperson with appropriate physical distance in addition to electric participation of guests. So I would like that put in there. I will leave it to the CAO and the clerk to determine when they think that can happen, but I would like it to happen as soon as we can. So I believe Council of Nyman, with his comments, would gladly second my, my amendment. And we'll go from there. Thank you, Councilor St. Jean, for acknowledging me.
Okay. And we'll, we'll discuss that part of it when we get to, once we finish up with the questions. Mayor Ferguson, followed by Councilor Forrester.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I'm, I'm in favor of this bylaw because I think it's a necessity as we, as we deal with the situation we're, we're dealing with. So I, you know, I'd like to move forward with it. But I fully concur with the sentiments of others about the, the preference for in-person meetings. That is something that we are looking at and investigating as to how we do that safely to allow, you know, members of council to, to gather in, in, in one room. And the participation of, of the public as well. That's certainly something that, that I think is, is crucially important, but in the meantime, I'm fully supportive of this, this initiative on the part of the clerk. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor Ferguson. Councilor Forrester. He's kind of disappeared on us. Is he booking campground stays right now or something? Okay, um, we'll, when he comes back, we'll give him an opportunity to speak. Is any other members of council wish to say, say anything? Council Roberts.
Just to say that I, I support where Councilors Prinsen and Nyman are going with this, an amendment. And I think Zoom is a useful tool and the gist of the motion before us is, is appropriate. But we need to get back to in-person as soon as is safe and possible. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Maynard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, just for clarity, this motion before us is speaking about when the ability to meet electronically, once there is no emergency orders, correct? But it's not really, it's not really targeted at the, at the here and now, but what we may hopefully sooner rather than later be able to do.
Madam Clerk?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Correct, Council of Maynard. It does address not just the problem of the emergency, but in the future, how do we permit electronic participation? However, the way that the bylaw is written is it's written that we wouldn't have to amend it should an emergency occur again. Let's say two years from now, there's flooding or something terrible happens and we're in an emergency, it would immediately kick in the wording. It says that unless we are in an emergency.
Madam Clerk, does this replace the temporary bylaw?
Correct, that does replace the temporary bylaw.
Right, but it doesn't really change what we're doing now during the emergency. Correct, okay.
I see Councilor Bollock's hand going up in front of his monitor. If it is in the air, okay. Go ahead, Councilor Bollock.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just trying to get the screen working properly. Anyways. I think the ability to participate electronically is important, and I share my fellow councillors' views that in person, you can't beat in person because of the dynamics that go on. But some of us find ourselves out of the area from time to time, or those of us that are far away from Shire Hall and bad weather. We elect not to try to drive through a snowstorm. We can still attend the meeting, and, and I believe those are useful tools. So I certainly support some kind of authorization to use electronic measures with the, with the caveat that for in-person, it is certainly preferable.
Thank you, Councilor Bollock. Still waiting for Councilor Forrester to come back on the screen. So while we're doing that, I will, I will make a couple of statements. I do agree that we, we need to more formal, formalize a bylaw that goes beyond the situation we're in. I personally see this as, as an option to, to make things better in the future. So that we don't get stuck where we have to figure out who's going to attend what meeting and when, and, and as Councilor Bollock just mentioned, you know, we have some unpredictable weather here in the county that could eliminate a few council members, and while you wouldn't necessarily have make quorum or make, be able to vote, at least you could participate. And I also see the, the greater benefit to the community when, when we do have deputants. I think that is a great way for, for some to be able to participate in a better way. So I, I think that's a good thing to do. And I do, I think everybody here agrees that we want to get back to regular face-to-face meetings. But we're kind of stuck right now in the situation we are, where, where groups of five or less are allowed. And that's, I think, the reality for now. So I'm going to support this because I think, I think it is a natural next step. And once we get out of the pandemic situation, you know, we'll be better for it. The, I guess the only other thing that I have to say on the matter is with regards to, to the convenience of it, I guess. I don't ever want to make it that convenient that council members don't show up to meetings. I think that would be a path we should not travel. Emergency use only. If there was some way that it would, you know, that we could be more explicit about that, the particular use of it, as opposed to making a regular habit of it. So, anyway, those are my comments. I don't see Councilor Forrester coming back. I see Councilor McMahon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In, in theory, I agree with this motion, the way it's written. We had an incident during the winter where one of our meetings was canceled because of inclement weather. This would allow us to continue to have the meeting. I agree. I had a two-month period where I was able to kind of watch what was going on on council, but I couldn't be there. And being able just to watch a stream does not make you part of the whole. And I was left right out of the proceeding. I could have, I, I sent text to some people, but that still did not make me part of the inclusion. So you can have different circumstances that make it possible that you are not able to physically be in the meeting. I understand that being a group together, being able to see the body language of each other, all I see is like 20, 15, 20 pictures here. And body language is so important in the, in the horseshoe, even your peripheral vision will pick up on what's going on. But just to look at these flat screens, we're, we're not really communicating. But this does give us the chance to be part of something, and, and, you know, we did not run to be councillors to avoid meetings, at least I didn't. But God acts in mysterious ways, so, you know. So that's, that's, that's my point. In, in theory, I can agree with this, and it allows us, if we can't make it, whether it be inclement weather, whether it be illness, that we can still be part of the proceeding. And yes, you may not be able to vote, but that doesn't mean you're not there. That's, so I can support this motion just the way it's written. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilor McMahon, Councilor Maynard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I was, I am in general, in, in favor of this until we started talking about weather events. So if there's personal reasons why you need to be away from a meeting, then, you know, that's, that's one thing. But I do not want to see that, that weather events should preclude a councillor from the ability to vote. Because the further your proximity to Shire Hall is, the more likely is that you will not be able to, to get to Shire Hall. So I think that, I don't know whether it actually needs to be stipulated, but I do not think that weather events should be a reason for either meeting is canceled because of a weather event or not. So those that are closer to Shire Hall, but to be precluded from voting because of a weather event, I would not. So I was good until we started going down that road. I don't, don't support that. How do we, how do we ensure that weather events are not included? I guess I'll frame it in a question.
That would be to the clerk then, I guess?
Yeah, the clerk, CAO, would like.
Through you, Mr. Chair. When it comes to inclement weather, I do recall we canceled a meeting this year. It would be a call of the mayor due to the weather to cancel it so that we can reschedule so that everybody's able to participate in a safe manner. But until the act, if the act changes, the electronic participation provision wouldn't unfortunately count towards quorum or voting. So in the event of an inclement weather, it would be the call of the mayor to ensure that the meeting is canceled so that everybody can be there safely.
Councilor Nyman, did I see your hand up? Go ahead.
So I've listened, and I guess for me, I'm kind of, I like, I guess you'd call it institution, government, or anything like that, then we're talking about voting and can you vote through the computer and everything else? I guess for me, you know, meetings are, we've got elected by, by the residents of Prince Edward County, and they're expecting us to have these meetings. They want to see us in-person meetings, and if, when you have the meetings, that's where the vote should be. You can't be away from meetings and voting. You've got to, we, every one of us has committed to serve Prince Edward County. Part of that service is having these meetings, in-person meetings, and following the institution, not changing rules and trying to make them so they fit everybody. They can't fit everybody. So that's kind of my comment.
Okay. Anybody else wish to step in there for a second time? No? So I do have a motion on the floor. Was a Margitson Bailey motion? There was discussion of a possible amendment. Is that going to happen, or shall I just move forward with the motion as read? I'll go to the clerk first, Council of Prinsen.
So through you, Mr. Chair, the amendment that Council of Prinsen is putting forward, it deals, it has a correlation to electronic meetings, but it's a separate issue. It's a direction of the CAO and I to start exploring how we can physically, in a safe manner, bring you all back together to start doing in-person meetings. So it, while, while there is a correlation, I prefer that we vote on this and then that as a separate motion immediately after.
Okay, Council of Prinsen, are you okay with that?
He's the boss.
Okay, all right. Having heard that, and now we know who the real boss is here. We, I will call the motion, the Margitson Bailey motion. I won't ask that it be read again. I think we all pretty much understand it. So all in favor? And I see a majority of hands up. And I see a majority of hands up. That's carried. Okay, councillor Prinsen.
Thank you, councillor chairman. So now I will put forward my second motion to put both bosses together and say that the clerk and CAO explore restarting meetings of council in person with appropriate physical distance in addition to electronic participation of guests. And councillor Nyman was my second on that one.
Okay. Does the clerk have that wording? Okay. Any discussion on councillor Prinsen's motion? Councillor Markitsin?
Yes. Can we meet again in person with the distancing measures if we're still in a state of emergency? I wonder if there's any connection to the municipal state of emergency. Thank you.
Madam CAO?
So, under the municipal state of emergency, it is the basically a decision of the emergency control group as to how we meet. But I don't think that there's anything that would preclude this. I would say that this is coming forward in committee of the whole, which means it won't take effect until it's ratified at council, at your next council meeting.
So just a follow-up, then. We can continue under our municipal state of emergency if you find a way to resolve the meeting, the issue that's been put forward by councillor Prinsen.
That's correct.
And the provincial state of emergency has no bearing on it either? I take it?
No. Either the municipal or the provincial emergency is what enables you to vote in this format, but they don't require this format.
Any further questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, I will call, oh no, I see councillor Ballack's hand up in the air.
Yeah, I just listened to councillor Markitsin's question. I think the gist of it, I didn't get an answer to what I thought was the gist of it, was whether the provincial ban on gatherings of more than five people would apply to a meeting of council. And so whether we are actually precluded from meeting in person until that order is lifted, that was the question that I understood.
So through you, Mr. Chair. Municipalities and the work that municipalities need to do is an exception under the order powers that limits five persons. So it needs to be in the view of the municipality that this is an essential meeting that needs to take place, and we would still need to follow social distance. So if we were to do this, it would have to look something more like the first meeting we had in person at the pandemic when we were all separated out.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that clarity, yeah. Any further questions with regards to the motion? Mayor Ferguson? You have the floor, Mayor Ferguson.
Thanks. I don't know about all of you, but I have been experiencing incredible audio dropout. So I didn't hear you. No, I just wanted to clarify that the moving back to face-to-face is really a function of the social distancing provisions and how it can be accomplished, and also take into account, you know, the live streaming and staff who might be attending and, you know, what that space might be, might look like, might look like. But it is certainly something that I would like to move forward with.
Okay. So Mayor Ferguson had the final word. I will call the motion as placed on the floor by councillor Prinsen and Nyman. All in favor? That is carried. Okay. So that now brings us to item 6.2, report of the CAO office dated May 28th regarding proposed RFP to encourage internet service providers to connect more of Prince Edward County. Should we have the motion placed on the floor first? Madam clerk?
Yes, please.
Okay, that's a Hirsch-Ballack motion. Please go ahead, councillor Hirsch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a Hirsch-Ballack motion. The council received report CAO 04/2020 for information. The council directs staff to issue an RFP offering free access to municipal towers and buildings as well as unused internet fiber connections for a five-year period in exchange for an agreement to provide internet service to underserved areas of the county. And the council directs staff to renegotiate existing tower contracts to incorporate zero fees for a period of five years to achieve equity for all service providers. And if I might speak to that first, Mr. Chair?
Please do.
So these meetings are perfect evidence of why we need better internet in the county. We've got participation here from various sites. And interestingly, right in the middle, Picton and Shire Hall seems to be some of the worst connection. I've got someone who would like to provide a solution for Shire Hall, but anyway. So it's a given that we have a problem with internet. I do have problems, though, with these recommendations. We're being asked to forego $40,000 or potentially more in the future per year of rent on our water towers and various other municipal structures with the thought that the people mentioned in the report would actually be able, from those locations, to provide better service to the so-called last mile. And we're all familiar with the last mile. The last mile are those places where population density has made it unattractive for the major businesses to provide service. The trouble is that nobody from, say, the Bloomfield Water Tower or the other water towers or the other locations mentioned is going to be able to technically cover last mile. It's proven that that just doesn't work. How you cover last mile is by putting up more installations, more towers or other kinds of facilities. And there are technologies that enable that to happen. So I don't see how losing $40,000 that we can ill afford to lose at this point in time is actually going to result in success from the same companies like ExplorNet and KOS who have not been able to satisfy the need of the county in the past. There is a mention in the report of Tri-Canadian Energy. And Tri-Canadian, as some of you may know, has been putting up, call it a regional, I think the staff refers to this as a regional solution. And they've been covering some interesting parts of the county that don't get good coverage from the other providers. And they've done this by putting broadcasting equipment on the top of the Lehigh cement pot, where Lehigh was so happy to have the service that they didn't charge them anything for. They are putting up a tower at Westley Acres, which is going to cover Sheba Island and the Westley Acres development. They've put towers on top of silos, where Farmer was delighted to provide that because, again, they would get internet service at no cost. But none of this involves county's infrastructure. These types of installations don't need that. So I've got a problem with us giving away $40,000. I don't think we're going to get commitments or ability from these providers to make the last mile type of service from those locations. That requires other infrastructure. And as just as a side question in this, it continues to me to be a real disappointment. All the money that we give to Eorn, which this year was another $55,000 in the budget, doesn't seem to result in any improvement in the situation. When they came and gave us a deputation a couple of months ago, a few months ago, they were unable to answer the question as to what they're doing specifically for the county in terms of extending the internet. So I'm not in favor of this as it stands. Yes, it'd be great to find a way that we could incent companies to provide better service to the last mile, but I don't think this is the answer. Thank you.
Council members, I see councillor Maynard, followed by councillor Roberts.
Thank you. Well, councillor Hirsch has spoken some of my concerns. But so it's the purpose of this to give free access on the existing towers to those tenants to encourage them to build new towers in the underserved areas. Because if you're in proximity to one of those towers, you probably already have a reasonable option. Like, I mean, the internet inconsecund is, you know, above average, I would say, for the county and from a number of different sources. So that's a question. Is that what the intent is? Is that then they will, that, you know, we'll be able to get them to build towers in areas that are less served? And it's not just in the low-population areas, anywhere where there's not good line of sight. And I would say, you know, anywhere from that Burr Road area all the way north through the populated areas of Williamsburg, Victoria Road, Fenwood Gardens are virtually are in dead spots. And that's just that we need another, you need more towers to cover those. And so that, and one last point is, I think that we should be going back to Eorn. And we know now, not that we didn't before, but it's more obvious that they need to refocus their priority on internet instead of on the cellular coverage. Because the first part of the job was not completed. And we have children that are now doing school from home that have to have the teachers, you know, drop off, you know, little sticks. They can't, so this is an absolute requirement. I think that the cellular coverage is a far-distant priority to having reliable internet. So how do we make that happen? I guess first, there is the question there about how, like, it's giving these, the space on these existing towers, how does that actually encourage them to build new towers where they're needed? If anybody might want it.
Madam CAO? Did you want to respond to that?
Sure. So the purpose of this report is coming from proponents who are interested in either putting up towers, new towers, towers on our buildings or attaching to our existing towers. And our issue is that we cannot offer something to one company that isn't offered to all companies. That is considered bonusing under the municipal act. So the idea here is to basically, right now, we have a complicated arrangement of agreements with a number of providers which are in the appendix or the attachment to this report. We're not suggesting that it is a loss of $40,000, but that is about leveling the playing field so that we don't get sued. So the idea here is that if anybody, any of these smaller players has some ideas and thinks that they can help bring internet to parts of the community, and they need to set up a tower or they need to access dark fiber that we have extra of, we would do that. Right now, we make you pay for that. And in order to not make you pay for that so that we can incent that type of behavior, we're proposing we'd enter into agreements with people, but we would not charge them. So the loss of income is that if we're not going to charge the new players who might come in to do things, we can't charge the people who already are going month-to-month with us on basically a similar type of activity. So it's not that we think the towers, existing towers are in the right location and we need more providers to stick on to Bloomfield or something. But the idea is that it just levels the playing field. So yes, we are hoping this would encourage people to come to us and say, I want to build a tower, or I want to put a tower on your existing building. Or do you have any dark fiber in this general area from one of your own municipal operations that we could pull a strand or two off and connect our system? So that's what we're trying to incent. And the RFP would see if there's any interest out there.
Okay. Councillor Roberts? And then councillor Nyman?
Thank you. Well, it's no secret that I've long worried about Eorn being a bit of a boondoggle for us as a rural municipality and us shipping good money after bad in terms of results. But I would like to make sure, Marcia, that if we are doing an RFP that we lean in towards open access, an open access approach which stimulates competition and that we develop a strong allergy to any monopoly approach going forward. I am disappointed that we find ourselves in a situation where, you know, folks like Bell and Rogers and Kojiko and ExplorNet, you know, they build into their business plans, you know, tower leasing and fiber leasing all the time. And I think they just see Eorn as a way of saying, hey, you know, we don't need to do that. We'll get subsidies even. So in a perfect world, I would like us to get as soon back to proper leasing of our towers, 500, 750 a month, whatever it is, to at least recoup some past revenues. I also have some worries about Tri-Canadian Energy. I'm not even sure they're registered with the CRTC as a proper ISP. So we'd want to check that out, I think. Maybe they are, but last I heard, they weren't. And there is some service problems with them with regard to, you know, returning phone calls and no-shows at installation and that sort of stuff. So, you know, tread carefully in that area. And so one question is checking on, you know, just exactly what Tri-Canadian is in terms of its official status with the commission. Secondly, the question is, can we use our have-your-say as a kind of public engagement platform here? I mean, I don't know where the real gaps are in the county in terms of service delivery and speed delivery. But if we invited our residents and perhaps even our visitors to, you know, contribute to us doing a kind of mapping of where those gaps were, that's another way of engaging in a conversation with our residents about internet service and speeds. That's it, thank you.
Councillor Nyman? Followed by Mayor Ferguson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I can support this. And I know it's $40,000 a year that we're foregoing. But there's a lot of places in the county that don't have the reliable internet. And if we dangle a carrot and get some, a company that will provide that to us, it's well worth the $40,000. And it's only for five years. If something, if nothing happens within that five years, then, you know, we're able to go a different route or within that five years, something else could come up. $40,000 is not a bad investment to try and get the extreme areas the internet that they need. I think somebody mentioned, and the pandemic is driving it home more. More people are working from home. And it's going to, they're going to continue to work from home. The kids are at home doing self-learning on the internet. We got to give them a chance to continue that. And a $40,000 investment is not, for this, is not that bad. So I'll support it the way it is.
Mayor Ferguson? You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I just want to do a couple of things. Councillor Nyman touched on a couple of items. But in early March, the world changed. And the world changed significantly in Prince Edward County and the ways in which people interact with each other. As councillor Nyman noted, people are working from home. People are learning from home, connected to the internet. Because there have been the shutdown of certain sectors of our economy, more and more people are spending time watching Netflix or the news or whatever through the internet. And more and more and more of these types of meetings, such as the one we are involved in right now, are taking place. And I have no idea how many of these would be taking place concurrently throughout the county. And I have no idea how many of these would be taking place concurrently throughout the county, but my guess is that we're not alone. So I am, I'm in favor of, we have to deal with this problem and trying to, to service as much of Prince Edward County as we can, as quickly as we can. And I like the idea of beating the bushes and let's see who's out there that may be able to provide some assistance. This is the way we're going to be working for the foreseeable future. And also with, on a larger, you know, a larger, you know, looking at this from a larger perspective, the pandemic is going to, you know, possibly we will see influxes of people from, from urban areas who want to now work remotely because they're going to be able to. They don't have to report to an office. So we've got to, I think it's incumbent upon us to look under every stone to see what, what is out there and get something going as, as quickly as possible. So I'm supportive of this. As to Eeyorn and their activities, I think they have received exactly the same wake-up call. But, you know, we'll be having those conversations in due course. But in the meantime, I think this is a, this is a good first step to at least identify who's out there, what they may be able to do in the areas they may be able to service. And it will be particularly helpful if they could do something right now, because I'm seeing dropout and audio and, and everything else. And I'm sitting right in the middle of it. So those are my thoughts.
Okay, Counselor McNaughton.
Thank you. I am also interested in seeing this go forward, particularly in the, in the, in this timeframe. But I don't want Counselor Roberts' notion to get lost in, in the discussion. I thought that was a really good idea, going out to the public to do a group mapping exercise, essentially a group mapping consultation that would allow us to identify where the real trouble spots are and would be helpful for any service providers going forward and would also be able to allow us to continue to work as partners with the public to map where the improvements are or where they aren't, so that we can most readily hold those providers to account. I think, I think that's a great idea and I don't want it to get lost.
I think the other thing it would do, Kate, is it would help us decide on what the RFP criteria and requirements would be as well, going through that public process.
And, and then down the road, identify those areas where we can continually improve, working with those. I think it's a great idea.
Thanks.
Thank you both. Anyone else wish to speak? Okay, I have Counselor Margerson and then Counselor McMahon.
Thank you, Counselor St. Jean. I support the motion too, because I think at least the request for proposals gives us the opportunity to see if there's anything there before we forego that our annual revenues. I, I must admit, I found the current agreements and the expired agreements a bit confusing because some of the current agreements say they're expired and some of the expired say they're still in motion, but I, and I wondered who, do we own the tower at Roblin Lake or this Bell? That's a question because it seems like they're going to abandon that site according to this, that it won't be renewed. And the second thing is the Quinney Communications Limited Tower on Chukri Hill says PEC owned communications equipment on there. Does that mean if we put out an RFP that our lease or rental of that site would be available to other providers? And I say that because Chukri Hill is the highest elevation in the county and was always the place our communication towers were. So it might serve, you know, areas in southeastern Prince Edward County well. And I wondered if that tower was available through our, it looks like we have an agreement to use it, if that would be available to other providers through our, when we open up this process for proposals.
There was a question there, Madam CAO.
Brian, can you answer those questions, please?
Sure. Through you, Mr. Chair, to Counselor Margerson. Firstly, the, the Bell Mobility Tower near Roblin Lake, it's on county-owned land, but it is a Bell Mobility structure. So it's their tower and it's on our land. So they're paying for the use of county land to, to have put up that tower years ago and to continue to operate that, that cellular tower. Not, not overly privy, privy of exactly what is on there, but I've always understood that it's, for the most part, cellular. There, there may be other linking radios on there. To answer another, another one of your questions about, say, for instance, the Quinty Communications, the tower on Chukri Hill, and I'll lump in the Bell Media Tower, which is on Greenpoint Road, up just off 49, near Longreach. Both of those towers are owned by other entities. And so there were an agreement that was put in there just to show that there are agreements that we are in, but it's a kind of the reverse. It's, it's us needing to place equipment on somebody else's tower. So I really don't see that there would be any ability for us to offer that site up to, to other companies. They would, they would really, in my understanding would be, they would have to approach Bell Media or Quinty Communications on their own and ask for access and they would go through their own access agreement, just like we are essentially tenants on the Chukri Hill Tower and the Greenpoint Road Tower.
Thank you, Brian. I just wondered if we could sublet it? And I wondered about the agreement for the Bell Tower. I thought it was theirs. I wondered if we owned it at the end or when they, you know, vacate the site. But that would be terms of the agreement, I guess, or, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor McMahon, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I, I, I can agree with this request for an RFP. I mean, we've had two instances today with the, the lack of proper internet. I mean, Rachel Kuzmic, who was doing the thing, her internet died. My internet died just before I was ready to answer a question and I'm inconsecucon, which apparently, according to Counselor Mader, has excellent service. But in addition to that, like Mayor Ferguson says, there are people going in and out. There's choppy speech and it, so yeah, we definitely really need to have a look at this. But I have one question and Counselor Margerson kind of touched on it and it was these agreements that are coming up for expiry, specifically the Bell Media one. And, and I think Brian kind of answered the question, but if we were to put out this RFP and we got correspondence back and we thought, are there any penalties for us ending the agreement with Bell Media before December of 2021? Or, you know, the other one that's only five, six months away, Quinty Communications? But there would be, would there be any penalties if we pulled out of those particular agreements? I don't know who can answer those questions. Thank you.
Through, through Mr. Chair to, to you, this is something that, so these agreements with Quinty Communications of Bell Media are for, these are for point-to-point wireless radio equipment that, that the municipality needs in order to run and maintain our wireless network. We have a fairly extensive wireless network that interconnects a number of our buildings. And those two sites were actually added and those agreements put in place during the VHF upgrade project that was done, that it was carried out in, in partnership with the IT Department and the Fire Department to, so part of the upgrade of their system to improve their communication with pagers and with their two-way radios was to get on, to put count, Prince Edward County equipment on those towers. So we want to stay on those towers. It just so happens that those are, those are, they're really, they're, you know, in the spirit of renewing agreements for us to have the benefit of being on those towers in our case. So, so they're kind of, they're similar in concept, but they're kind of, we're on the other end of, of the stick, so to speak. Whereas we're the tenant, we need to put our equipment on their towers, whereas these other sites we're talking about are us having vertical real estate per se, so that other companies can come and provide services from our sites. So similar in concept, but different in, in, you know, application.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any, before I go to Counselor Hirsch, anybody else wish to speak for a first time? No? Okay, Counselor Hirsch, you have the floor.
Just a question for staff. If we approve this, the way it's read, we're essentially saying to a potential bidder that you can have free access to our towers if you want them. And in return, you're going to promise to provide internet service to an underserviced area. That, that implies, and I'm asking the question, is that how you propose to go at it? That they're going to make some kind of guarantee and we're going to be able to follow up to see if, if that service was actually provided and did they put the appropriate kind of technology in place? If I, if I think of, and some of us are very familiar with this, there are many different technologies and the technology that ExploreNet and KOS use is subject to overloading because they don't use fiber. And one of the reasons, I can see the Bloomfield Water Tower from the office that I'm sitting in now and I used to have ExploreNet service until they end up with so many customers that nobody has good service anymore. And they won't do anything about it. We talked to the senior people there in, in New Brunswick and they just said, well, that's how it is. And they're famous for this. So that's not the kind of service that we want to encourage somewhere else. So I trust that if we approve this, there would be a robust process of, of analyzing responses to these RFQs to ensure that people are actually going to provide viable internet service in the underserviced areas. I don't know if there's a, a staff response to that.
Madam CAO or Brian?
So through you, Mr. Chair, to Counselor Hirsch, I, I take your point and based on this conversation, I might recommend an amendment to the motion before you. There's another way we could do this. Instead of directing staff to issue an RFP, an RFP would mean you guys in that sector, tell us what you think you'd like to do and then we'll have to analyze whether or not we think that's a good deal. If we did the, if we did an expression of interest, we could do the consultation first as Counselor Roberts recommended. Do consultation, figure out what's precisely the problem we're trying to solve and, and in which areas, and have a more specific ask and then do an expression of interest. Who can fix this particular problem in this particular area this way? And then, and then make an agreement that we were, we had not recommended the expression of interest option in the report, but I think it's an equally viable choice. You may recall, we did the expression of interest when we were talking about the Marina, when we knew exactly what we wanted to do and we want to see if somebody wants to do, do it the way we're asking. Instead of an RFP, which is a bit more proponent-driven where they pitch us ideas. So I would recommend that we switch this wording to say an expression of interest. And you might want to add after consultation, public consultation, issue an expression of interest. And I think that might address some of the issues that you've raised, Counselor Hirsch and others as well.
I think that's a great idea.
Madam CAO, would that also mean deleting part three? Because essentially you're, you're changing things, correct?
Through you, Mr. Chair. It would be clause two. So that council directs staff to consult the public and issue an expression of interest, offering free access and so on. So I think if that, Madam CAO, is that.
Okay, all right.
That's correct.
So that, would that, I, I will ask for the clerk's interpretation. So on that recommendation, would that be considered a friendly amendment suggestion to Counselor Hirsch, whose motion this is?
Correct, if he's amenable to it. Thumbs up. Nice.
Okay, I see a thumbs up there. Okay. Anything, now, who did I have afterwards? Did I have anybody? No? I see Mayor Ferguson's finger in the air.
Just a question, if this change is undertaken, this is to the, the CAO. What, if possible, what is the estimated timeline to undertake this? The, getting the expression of interest and public input? Any idea how long this would take? Because I view this as, as a matter where time is, is of the essence.
So through you, Mr. Chair, to the mayor, I, I believe we could move quickly on some consultation. I think we'd want to do a mail-out as well as the Have Your Say platform. A little ironic to be looking for online feedback about how you don't have connection. So we would do a letter to residents as well. I, I would also suggest that we allow for the mail, which hasn't been doing great in terms of delivery times under COVID. So it, you know, and we might want to give it at least three weeks to let this consultation take place. We could move it probably within the week, put something together. And, and so we're probably thinking in expression of interest early July. Now, keep in mind, I'm making this all up right now and probably staff in offices are cringing, but, but yeah, I think that, and we can move it quickly. I understand the urgency, but that's what I would think is a rough estimate.
Okay. Madam Clerk, if you have redrafted that second clause in the motion, could you read it so that everybody is familiar with exactly what the new wording will be?
Absolutely. So it would say that council receive report CAO 04-2020 for information. That council directs staff to conduct public consultation and then issue an EIO, offering free access to municipal towers and buildings as well as unused internet fiber connections for a five-year period. In exchange for an agreement to provide internet service to underserved areas of the county and that council directs staff to renegotiate existing tower contracts to incorporate zero fees for a period of five years to achieve equity for all service providers.
Counselor Hirsch and Ballack, are you in agreement with that? And I, oh, there he is. Mover in secondary agree?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I, Counselor Margerson, and then I'm going to call the vote.
Yeah, sorry, Counselor St. Jean. I just, I wanted to speak to what you just brought up. Do we need item three in this motion at this time? Or would that be in something that's included as potential incentive in a expression, call for expressions of interest?
Through the, the chair, I, I agree, we could drop three because we'd have to come back and talk to you about what the expression of interest would look like based on consultation. I think that would be a best practice in this case. So we can, in the meantime, we will look at what, it would depend on what the expression is as to whether or not it would be a requirement under the municipal act in order to renegotiate and provide that for free. So we'll do some more exploring. So I would suggest we just drop three.
So clause three is, is deleted from that motion?
Director of Finance, Amanda's on the line. Any concerns with that, Amanda?
No, I have no concerns.
Okay. Okay, not seeing any. I would like to call the motion as amended and presented by Counselors Hirsch and Ballack. All in favor? And that is carried. Okay, given that the next item on the agenda is probably going to consume a bit of airtime and the fact that we have been all on since about noon. I would like, well, I will call a 10-minute recess. So we shall resume, resume play at 3:10. Yeah.
Madam Clerk, Catalina, if you're there.
Yep.
Just, just to be forewarned, depending on that I will be, that I will have to leave the meeting no later than 10 to four. So it's probably not, it'll be probably before the meeting is concluded. So when you see me go off, you'll know why. If you could announce that for me.
I will for sure. Well, you know, you never know.
Yeah, Catalina, I, I've had to step out a couple of times too, because I've had different suppliers pull in here and the fire extinguisher guy, my sanitary engineers pulled in. So it's been a busy day.
I bet. It has been a very busy day. It's been a busy week.
You sanitary engineers, what the?
The septic hall. Yeah, of course, everyone, everyone's pulling in at the same time.
I'm going to try to join by audio on my cell phone because my internet connection is extremely unstable. And I'm hearing like every third or fourth word. So I don't know if you're putting me back in the waiting room or if I'm staying in the meeting.
Just leave her in.
Give it a try, like we did last time.
Are you at home, Amanda?
I'm in the office, but I'm in the basement. Catalina, what's your recommendation?
Try staying in, because that's what you did last time, right? But you did with your phone first.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just going to stay in here and then tell it I'm going to connect by phone.
Yeah, I'm really watching the choppy audio here. It's just been terrible. Listening parts of the conversation.
Yeah, it's tough. And because this is being recorded and then I have to upload it on YouTube after the fact. I'm going to have to see how that's going to work.
Yeah. Something, sorry, I'm just finishing lunch. Something that consider is the, the time of day. Because right now, there's probably heavy internet usage everywhere as, as there is in early evenings, kind of five to seven o'clock. I don't know if anybody else has noticed it, but my internet grinds to a halt. And that's, you know, this is what we're, what we're faced with, with this internet usage bubble, it's called that.
Yeah, it's pretty bad. But luckily, what I'm happy about is that the issue with the Zoom and the YouTube is not, it's an external issue. It's an issue between Zoom and YouTube with the update, Zoomed with the update, and then it recalibrated its connection with YouTube.
So does the recorded, does the recorded meeting go out and flow seamlessly? Or fairly seamlessly? The audio dropout and that sort of thing? Is that what's being captured or what goes out?
It's the same as if it was on YouTube. So it's everybody's video, like it's everybody's faces.
Yeah, I know.
If someone goes choppy, then they're choppy on the YouTube video as well.
That's what I'm asking. Yeah, okay. So it's a function of the individual internet connection that is going to be reflected on the actual live stream. Okay.
Catalina, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. I will say that even when you breathe on the screen, if you call in by your phone, you don't tend to miss the conversation.
Yes, there's that audio call in and keep, you can keep your video running and have an audio call in as your audio option. So if things get super choppy, that's a good way to go.
So Steve, the funny thing is that, that I have, I never get any choppiness in sound like you seem to be suffering. So I think it's the connection and at Char Hall that's the issue for you.
Well, and it's also possible, if it's really bad, you can get out and come back into the meeting again.
Yes.
And just see if you get a somewhat better connection.
Yeah, it's, it's been very, I think I'll, I'm going to do that, Madam Clerk, just so we get in here, so.
If you watch a Bible Council, though, even right in the city, they, they're experiencing the same thing. I mean, it's just.
Yeah, but this, this goes in and out. Now it's fine. But, but you know, during the course of the meeting, it was really, really weird. And then people freeze, you know, and they, the images aren't flattering when people freeze. They always catch people at the worst moment, like.
Yeah, mine's working good today. The other night it wasn't working well at all.
Yeah.
I couldn't hear a thing the other night. I was reading lips. Poorly. How are you, Amanda?
I'm doing, oh, well, thank you. Yourself?
Good. Are you going into work most days at the building or are you staying home some days?
No, I work every day out of the building. Yeah.
Is it ghostly?
My children are, are, are home. So, well, my young adults are home, so I choose to come to work.
Don't blame it.
They're in their twenties. They know everything.
Whereas mine still needs the math tutoring. So this works. Not today, though.
I don't have to worry.
Thank you. Welcome back, everybody. So we are now at item 6.3 on the agenda. A report of the Community Services Programs and Initiatives Department dated May 28th regarding temporary flexibility in urban areas for hospitality slash retail. I need a mover. Counselor Bailey. So that would be a Bailey McMahon motion. Could you please read that, Counsel Bailey?
This is a Bailey McMahon motion that council receive report CSP 29-2020 for information and to the council direct staff to bring forward a revised temporary amended patio licensing bylaw to the June 9th, 2020 council meeting for approval that includes the changes proposed in this report. And that three, the council direct staff to facilitate public dining in Benson, the Mill Pond and Wellington Parks by providing picnic tables and extended hours for public restrooms and trash collection. And for the council direct staff to investigate the public consumption of alcohol in parks that includes engaging community shareholders and reporting back to council no later than the last meeting of council in June. Five, the council direct staff to bring forward the draft temporary parking bylaw to the June 9th, 2020 meeting of council for adaption. And six, that staff review the patio licensing bylaw 3372 hyphen 2014 for viability, accessibility and effectiveness, including the results of the proposed temporary patio licensing program no later than the end of quarter one, 2021.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Bailey. Director Todd Davis, would you like to speak to the, give a synopsis or a staff verbal report on this matter, please?
Absolutely. So what I provided today in this report, it related to all of these recommendations come from working with the mayor's economic recovery team. These reports, these requests have come specifically from the business sector. And I'm bringing them to council for contemplation and direction. So they've asked for, in light of what's happened, as we start to look at reopening the economy, different businesses will have significant impacts. The hospitality sector in particular will be, will, will have some related to physical distancing requirements that are likely to take place or be requested both of the province and at their own, and at their own sort of desire and in an effort to meet what customers' expectations will be. And so they're looking for some amendments to the patio licensing bylaw temporarily for the 2020 season. And they included a series of changes as requested in the report in terms of removing the removal of fees, extension of the program date to later date in November, hour extension of hours, reduction of width clearances, elimination of fencing requirements and the fast tracking of applications. They also asked us to talk about, or they also brought forward the idea of expansion of the ability for dining options in, in our public parks. So currently, people are allowed to come and picnic in our parks. However, they wanted some specific, they identified three parks in the Picton, Parkin, Picton, a park in Wellington and a park in Bloomfield, all that they wanted some dedicated space or some space where we could bring together some tables for people to consume. For people to consume food. There was a request around alcohol that I had put made into a separate request or recommendation simply because there's more information that's required on something like that. And then they asked for, as I think was referenced in the executive director or the Sarah Dorian's presentation on Tuesday night related to parking spaces to extend sidewalks. We are seeking some direction from council on amending the, or creating some temporary parking bylaw. So the report, I think, is relatively self-explanatory. These requests have all come from the various members of industry who've got together to talk about economic recovery. And I'm bringing them to you for some direction as to how you would like me to proceed.
Okay, thank you, members of council. Any questions with regards? Okay, I have Counsel Bailey, McNaughton, and then Mayor Ferguson to start with.
Todd. Part of my background, item number four. Public consumption of alcohol in a park. Have you looked into how that may or may not occur? When I got in contact with the AG CO yesterday, they found it intriguing, but couldn't find any precedent that would allow for this sort of thing.
So my initial, my initial thought was much along the same line as, as yourself, Counsel Bailey. It was not allowed or has not generally been allowed. What I was able to find in my research, specifically on the AG CO's website, was that in May 2019, the Ontario government introduced changes to the Liquor Licensing Control Act. Specifically, section 41.4 would be a lot, would give us the municipality the ability, the ability to designate public places via bylaw that would allow for the consumption of alcohol. I'm not suggesting that, that's something that should happen to the municipality. I think a much larger community conversation has to happen if we were to contemplate that. That law has passed in principle in the Ontario Legislature, but it has not received royal assent at this point. And so it is, I mean, it's maybe a little bit premature, although we anticipate that it's going to. I mean, if the government has passed it, it's only a matter of time before it receives the scent and we would have the ability to do such a thing. I'm not suggesting we go ahead and do that right out of the gates. I'm suggesting that we maybe want to have a community conversation about what that looks like. Because while I appreciate and support the business community's desire to, to request for some assistance in reopening the economy. Alcohol in public parks is something that goes just beyond our, our business community or hospitality community and may have a greater effect on other members of the community. And so I think we need to have some conversation. Would ever have, before we entertain something along those lines, we would need to do some more public consultation. And I was pretty explicit with the hospitality group that, that that would be my position. I didn't take a lot of positions. I, I wanted to more be a conduit of what their requests are to you. But I took that particular position with regards to alcohol from that, for that exact reason.
Thank you.
Counselor McNaughton and then Mayor Ferguson.
Thank you. Well, I generally, on the whole, would like to see this go ahead. But I have several concerns, some of which I brought up in an initial meeting that I was included in as one of the counselors for Picton. If this does go ahead, I just want to make sure that it, that it moves forward without impacting other regions of the county and the services that they receive. So that if, if there are increased garbage collection needs, increased needs for washing maintenance, that it doesn't have negative impacts anywhere else. And also accessibility is still a big question mark that I have as far as how, how the sidewalks in the urban areas are going to be managed. And, but, and then Stuart has sort of put voice to the, I think, I think it's the alcohol aspect. There's room for consultation there. Anyway, I think on the whole, it'd be a really nice positive move for our communities to actually get bodies on the streets. I think it's great that we're looking at this.
And I would, I would just, just to reiterate, when I wrote the report, I mean, this, lots of this stuff related to economic recovery is pretty fast changing and is, so what I did, my initial research about sidewalk patio expansions as an example, I noted that that was being done in Toronto. I think Toronto, Newmarket and another community, Hamilton, which are certainly different urban centers than in Prince River County. But between authoring this report and getting it to count to, in front of council, communities like Kingston and Colberg have also started to create changes to their own patio bylaws to allow for this type of thing.
You're also looking at bigger projects with full street closures as well.
That's right.
Which does give them a certain ease that we won't have.
Absolutely. And one of the challenges we have as a, as a, from the, especially, especially in a community like Picton is we are connecting link. So it's, it's not as easy, it wouldn't be, it would be much more difficult for us to shutter Main Street of Picton for an extended period of time, simply because it's a, it's a primary transportation corridor. So I just wanted to, just wanted to sort of suggest some of those things. I don't disagree that accessibility may be a concern. And I have, I have indicated that we would have to bring this forward to the accessibility committee or, or members of the accessibility committee for feedback. I didn't want to hamper bringing this forward to council for some direction prior to, by waiting for another but I would seek the input of those in the accessibility group before we move forward with anything.
So, and can I just direct to Madam CEO, that one piece? Is this, this is possible? If we do undertake much of what's contained in this report, this is possible to do without impacting services in other areas. Is that correct? Or are there concerns in that regard at this time?
At this point, we, we see that working without having a negative impact on other services. I think our bigger question is that a lot of our tourist supportive functions are augmented by student labor every summer, which we have not pursued. So as the summer continues and we move farther into some of these things, we're going to have to revisit the student program. I'm awaiting to hear from the federal government. They promised some student financing for student positions. It's only gone to the private sector companies so far. They have not opened it for public sector. So either the province coming So either the province coming forward with, and province, federal government coming forward to support COVID costs to the municipal sector or some relief on student hiring. Either one of those would help us, but in the short term, we can do it without impacting services. In the longer term, for the whole summer, we're going to need some help.
That's great. Thank you.
Mayor Ferguson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I am, I think I'm particularly sensitive to the, to the needs of, you know, these businesses that have become such an integral part of our main streets, not just Picton, but also Wellington, Bloomfield. You know, Consecon is, you know, going to, going to be, I hope positively affected by this, as is Rossmore and some other places. The, because of COVID, this particular sector of our economy, retail and hospitality have been particularly and acutely affected. And the, as everyone knows, retail has been allowed to open and has been open for, you know, about a week now. The hospitality sector of the economy and what they can do, when they can do it, is a bit unknown at this point. But that, and they will, you know, likely have challenges when they're allowed to open their doors and so much as the, the number of tables and space indoors, you know, may be, may be affected. All those businesses bring and have brought vitality to our community and are many of the reasons that we see so many people, you know, come here during the tourism season and also decide to reside here on a, on a permanent basis. But also the group that, generally speaking, stepped forward pretty very, very well when there's a community need. You know, whether it's through donations or providing services above and beyond what they typically would do. So I'm hope, I'm hopeful that council is supportive of their need and the importance of doing everything we possibly can to ensure that they have tools to at least maintain their services during this horrific time. We won't be setting any kind of a real precedent here because similar undertakings are, are being contemplated as, as was mentioned in, in Toronto, Kingston, and other smaller jurisdictions. So they, some of these, some of these things require obviously considerable public input, use of the parks, certainly, and alcohol consumption. But those are, those are matters that, that we can get the input of the public to, to weigh in. But I think the public, generally speaking, would be very supportive of helping our businesses as, as much as we can in any way we can. So I hope council was supportive of allowing this to go through and to receive more fulsome information from, from staff and due course. I just view this as crucially important to our community as a whole to, to undertake on their behalf and show our support. So, for your consideration, thanks.
Thank you, councillor Maynard, followed by councillor Harper.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Recognizing that those in the hospitality industry will have particularly, will be particularly challenged through this, I, I'm just going to throw out and staff can either make notes or comments as they see fit some of the, some of the current concerns that I have. So the extra costs and the, the, the extra service that will need to be provided. And I would say that since most, most parks have received a pretty marginal level of service in the past, to add anything else, I think, will be, will be challenging without hiring, without hiring more staff. And that would have included summer staff anyways in the past. I also am concerned about the ability to clean tables and washrooms and enforcement and liability in the, in the overcrowding situation. Because if we start them, if it's in our park, who's, you know, I know it says on the alcohol rate contract that the OPP will be, will be consulted, but we're going to have some physical distancing issues on sidewalks if we allow patios to, to intervene onto the sidewalk areas and then have a five-foot walk around. The, the other one is the, is the parking spaces. Although I can see maybe a few, 52 in downtown Picton seems, seems like quite a bit. And I'm, I'm concerned that local shoppers, when we say shop local, I assume that means that the locals are shopping local. And when you're trying to access services that will take you downtown, parking without any, without parking, I think that could be a particular, particular issue. If we can find a way, either through the businesses or through the municipality to, to access the Regional Relief and Recovery Fund that really was targeted, some of that was targeted towards tourists, then maybe we might be able to, to make it work. But I do have some concerns and I'm sure they will be addressed on the, on our liability and enforcement issues in the parks in particular and on the patios. Or how, maybe I'll ask how staff receives addressing those particular issues of liability and enforcement.
Just to provide some feedback to councillor Maynard's points, there absolutely would be, we, we're asking for, we talked about the parking situation where we're suggesting that this is what the request is, but that we would need to get some feedback from the public, the, some of the businesses. I know the, the Picton BIA in particular has solicited feedback from their businesses, but the, the other urban, or the other settlement areas have not done the same amount. And we didn't want to hold up this request. What we are seeking opportunity to do is seek some public, public consultation and feedback. We're prepared to go out using have your, have your say platform immediately and start to gain that feedback, provided we get their direction from council that we want to go down something, down this kind of path. Councillor Maynard had also referenced the Regional Relief Fund. A grant, that grant fund exists, but it's not available generally to municipalities. It's, it's actually structured as a $40,000 loan from the federal government. They had an initial set of loans that came through for business, for businesses that were often facilitated through major lending organizations. This is for this, that relief fund is actually $10,000 grant, $30,000 loan, or $40,000 in loan, 10 unforgivable. And that comes through actually our local community futures development corporation and is, is structured for organizations and businesses that are not qualified, that could have a challenge qualifying for the other initial relief package. So I'm not sure that that grant would provide us with the relief that we require, although we are diligently every day looking to see what other kinds of grants are available to help offset some of the costs related to these types of things because we appreciate that there will be some costs for recovery. But we're also hopeful that higher levels of government will have some funding available to, to offset some of those costs associated to the municipality.
Thank you, Todd. Councillor Harper?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Well, as all of you know, I've been involved in the, the mayor's economic recovery group and prior to, along with yourself, Mr. Chair, for now an eight, nine weeks now. And so I feel, I feel like I have a, a good sense of, you know, businesses that are, are truly in trouble versus some that have been obviously greatly inconvenienced. And I, I do want to try to impress upon all of you that this isn't just about recovery. This is really about survival. And in a restaurant business where you depend on 80, 90% occupancy through the summer months to get you the money to get through the shoulder season, the winter and into March, when hopefully you start to get some positive cash flow again. It's a very scary proposition. And so, you know, what we're trying to do with this is recognize that for both retail, but in particular restaurants, to try to get them some space that they're going to lose because they are not going to be able to utilize their whole dining floor space for the summer. I think that's pretty much a given that the social distancing here for the rest of this calendar, which means they're going to be operating at best case scenario, best case scenario, on 50% of their floors, trying to make a living to get them through till March. So this space is gold for them. And, you know, so what that means is that it's very important that we act as we can. I think what, and I have to say that Todd and his group have done an awesome job at pulling this together with so much thought in such a short time. So I really do appreciate that, Todd. But it's important that we, I think, buy into the principle of it and let the details work themselves out. If we can't get this in place before July 1st, which is the start of the summer, we're already going to be giving them a much greater hill to climb here. So I am urging us all to think about getting on with this and let Todd do his job and see what is possible and recognize that, you know, it's not going to be perfect. This isn't about getting it right and living with it for the summer. This is about getting it started and refining, continuing to refine it over the weeks and months ahead and into the fall so that we can try to salvage some of the, the fall season as well. And, you know, the, the retailers and, and the restaurant crowd, they're really, they're really depending on us right now. The prospect of 30, 40% of them closing as a result of this is a very, very riskability. If you're following the news around the world, the hospitality industry in particular is truly on its knees. They're worried about their very survival. They've always lived on small margins and now they're going to be living on something even less than. So I hope we can see our way to giving Todd the green light to get on with it and let the details, you know, follow from there. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Harper. I have councillor Roberts next, and then Margatton.
Thank you, councillor. I just want to embroider on councillor Harper's remarks. I mean, out there in the literature, people are talking about only one in 10 restaurants in Ontario surviving this pandemic. In rural Main Streets, places like Arilia are worried that those numbers are exactly right. 30 to 40% of Main Street could be gone in terms of retail and small business. And when you look at who is retail and small business in places like, you know, Picton and Picton Main Street, almost 70% are, you know, women entrepreneurs. So I, I, I would like to encourage us to let Todd Davis get on with implementing and pursuing and, and keep all of our appendages crossed because it's going to be a rough go. Thanks.
Councillor Margatton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I agree with us supporting this. I just wanted to find out from someone, councillor Harper said the details will be sorted out. So I see two things that are coming back on June 9th. And that's the temporary parking bylaw and the temporary amended patio licensing bylaw. So is that, is this the schedule that we're looking at? I, I just, I'm curious because I wanted to give the accessibility people a chance to at least provide some comments or criteria for, for the sidewalk and accessibility to travel along the sidewalk, especially when we're, we're dealing with going over the curb now. And we're talking about limiting the width of the sidewalk adjacent to the patio. So that, that was one thing. Just the timing of this and, and also perhaps there's going to be a better look or maybe a closer look at how many parking spaces we can afford to. I mean, we're going from, what, we're going from Bowery all the way to the town hill on the north side of, of the Main Street in Picton. And there are some, and then we have the, the curbside pickup too. So and maybe that's the way to go. I'd just like a second look to make me feel comfortable that you're doing the right thing. But in theory, I know we have to help the hospitality sector. I just want a chance to give accessibility a chance to have some input and then have a good second look before it comes back for ratification by council.
Madam CEO?
Mr. Chair, to councillor Margatton, one option, the clerk explained earlier that we were talking about bringing another report for the next round of committees updating their terms of reference and getting them back on a more formal structure and accessibility is one of those. But in the interim and emergency way, we've been using writing means, including teleconference, to bring together in a more urgent way on, on one-off issues. We could do that with accessibility next week in tandem with the public consultation that Todd is talking about so that we can get their feedback before the bylaw comes forward on the 9th.
Yeah, so I got the report from Todd and I'm prepared to send it out to our membership tomorrow. And at, at this time, I guess, we'll be looking for input from them because we don't have any things specific from you yet. So maybe they can have some input as far as what would be appropriate criteria for these patios, where they'd be located. Maybe they'd be on the street and the sidewalk would be open. I mean, they wouldn't be covered then where some of them are on the sidewalk, but and then the railings and some of them were wrote before and that was the motivation for councillor Princeton's motion last year is that we did have some accessibility issues with the patio. So I just want to make sure we don't overlook that issue. So, so we are looking for the parking spots and the patios to come back on June 9th, which is a week from next Tuesday. Correct?
Yes, that was the original intention. I mean, I would have to defer to the CEO. We could maybe bring it back a little bit later. My concern is, is that if we leave it too long, so if we waited until the second set of meetings in June, that may not give the businesses the time they require to make, to get everything in place for reopening. Although, you know, I guess the question we have today is, is, and as things can change all the time, and there is not a lot of time between when the province decides that they're going to reopen one portion of the economy and when that portion actually opens. I think there was four days between an announcement and retail reopening. Councillor Forrester would probably know better about when the trailer campsites or campgrounds or trailer parks reopen, but I think he had very, very limited time to do that. And so I just want to make sure that we have the structures in place so that those businesses, when they can start to reopen, are able to do so. And so that's, that's the only reason why I wanted to bring it forward as, as quickly as possible. But I also am, am also very sensitive to the fact that we need to have some input from the public, from other businesses, and from the accessibility committee.
We're, we're, sorry, just to add on to Todd's comment, we're looking at a bylaw drafting here that is flexible. So we could add something that doesn't actually prescribe the park, to the parking spot, but maybe the maximum number of parking spots so that we can be more fluid, that we can adjust over time. So any advice the accessibility committee might have in terms of how we would conceive of this. And then we want to test it out and see how it goes. So I envision a bylaw that gives a little bit of a naming power for us to, within parameters, that would allow us to adjust throughout the summer.
Thank you.
Mayor Ferguson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to clarify the, the point about the announcements from the province. Typically, they are anywhere from two to four days. The Sandbanks announcement was two days. The campgrounds was two days, retail was four days. The campgrounds was two days, retail was four days. Not a lot of time to pivot. So the, that timing is a consideration here, but I do fully concur with the seeking advice and input from the accessibility community, the, the committee at least. Getting this moving is as quickly as we can because the, the word survive, survival was mentioned by councillor Harper. And in many cases, that's exactly what we are looking to address here. Thanks.
Anyone else wish to speak to the, the motion? Councillor, councillor Princeton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to point out or reiterate, not that any of you need to remember, but this wasn't the reason I wanted this brought back, although we are in different situations. And if I had a crystal ball, I would have brought it back sooner. But anyways, it doesn't matter. This isn't the reason. So I was named in the report, but definitely this wasn't my intention of a report that I wanted to see. So I will just bring that out. And then I was going through and looking at the parking spots and the businesses that will be impacted. And there's seven restaurants that have the patio option. And there's thirty-four businesses that'll be impacted. They don't have patio options. So I just want to make that known. There's thirty-four businesses that count on those parking spots. So we have to be very, very careful. I understand we want restaurants and hospitality to survive. But if we get those seven restaurants surviving, we lose thirty-four, town's going to look a lot different. So I just want to make those points. So you, you heard my thoughts today.
Thank you. Todd, I see your hand up.
Just, just, just want to say, I, I named councillor Princeton in the report to point out the fact that this was not the report that he was probably anticipating come back, that, and that my, my request for this to be reported on in the first quarter of next year would be more in line with what councillor Princeton was probably looking for in, when he, when he brought this forward in July of last year. So yes, he's absolutely correct. This, he didn't drive this one. But he, I just wanted to acknowledge that he had asked for a report. This wasn't the report he was probably anticipating.
Thank you, Todd, for acknowledging.
Okay, councillor Maynard?
Yep, just briefly, before this comes back to us to counsel, would there be an opportunity to have some preliminary, some preliminary costing? Because, you know, we'll, we'll all share in the whatever help we, we can we could give, but it'd be nice to have some preliminary costing to, to this.
Maybe that's something that Amanda, Director of Finance, can shed a little light on?
Sure, I can type to you that for the next meeting. I was just going to ask that councillor Maynard, through you, Mr. Chair, reiterate what she wanted me to zone in on in terms of costing. If possible.
Well, I had a list. I don't know. I can send it to you offline, I guess. It was really, it was on the, you know, on the Yeah, extra, extra cleaning. Lie belly isn't, isn't part of costing. Yeah. Lost revenue. I'll make a list and send it out to everyone.
That would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
And on the trash collection, we might as well just skip the recycling because recycling that's from food takeout containers is really not recyclable. It's so contaminated that unless you've got somebody cleaning it, maybe we'll just have big garbage bins to truck it away.
Okay, nobody else wishes to speak? I would, as my name was mentioned in the report, as councillor Harper was, I, I would just like to say that with regards to the, the fifty-two, fifty-five parking spaces in Picton, I think it is critically important that the public weigh in on the, the repurposing of, of parking spaces as well as greater outreach to the business owners who will be directly impacted if they choose not to use the space and the space is blocked off. So definitely there's got to be more, more consultation on that part. And I'm encouraged to think that, that, that will happen. With regards to, to the Bloomfield, the conversation that I had with, with a couple of business owners in Bloomfield, it was just a preliminary conversation and that was what, as we stood on the curb, properly socially distancing or physically distancing, we kind of pointed out a few obvious things. That, however, does require more consultation and particularly in Bloomfield, not just the businesses, but the residents. Because as everybody knows, Bloomfield is a mixture. It is not a commercial, true commercial core. It's actually residential core with auxiliary commercial. That's the way it's always, always been. Those are all old houses that have been converted. So there, there are bigger issues there. So that was preliminary conversations. And to let both my fellow councillors who represent Bloomfield Halliwell, I will be meeting with Rob Leek, the Chair of the Bloomfield Area Business Association tomorrow at about ten o'clock to talk to him a little more in depth and find out what it is Bab is going to do to talk with their, their business, their, their businesses and their membership. And hopefully there will be more information brought forward and maybe these recommendations will stick. Maybe others will come out. But definitely all part of the greater conversation. So I just wanted council to be aware that that was what my part in this process was. And both conversations I've had with Picton merchants, the BIA, and of course Bloomfield resident merchants surrounded, there, there was a great concern about accessibility that councillor Margatton brought up. So it is top of mind for everybody. This is not a sensible solution, but we certainly have to have opportunities. And we have to, to hit the road running and be flexible all at the same time. So anyways, those are my, my thoughts, my, my contribution. Anybody else wish to say anything? I see councillor Forster.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I'd just like to point out, moving forward, we have a very short window of opportunity here, basically two and a half, three weeks. And I know some people want to receive reports. We want to do a lot of public consultation. But I think moving forward, we have two major goals here. Is to make sure that we better do diligence when it comes to safety and make sure we can carry out these plans in somewhat of an organized methodology. What's going to happen to other stores, how we move traffic? There's no rulebook in anything that we could do or say to make this be writers or come up with ideas on how we make it better. But safety has to be top priority. And making sure that we're not allowing things to happen that can jeopardize that safety. But other than that, I know it's going to be hard to get public input because there's going to be people who want to have downtown front stores open, bars, not have it open. But I think we just have to do this as fairly quickly as we can and make sure we do it safe. And I think that's the most important thing right now. Make sure we do it safely. And that's the only points I really have to make here because like I'm seeing even from our business, it's hard to make plans for a month out when I still don't even know what the rules will be and how I'm going to do this. But when I open, I got to make sure I open safely. So I would suggest that every other business out there and how the county carries out, you know, if we do the park restaurants that, that make sure that we, yes, we have picnic tables, we have garbage facilities, we have cleaning stations. That should be our main priority. Everything else is going to fall into mistake or fall into place and then we will learn from our mistakes. But as long as we cover off the safety side, I think that's the main thing getting through this.
Okay. I will say that that's the final word on this, this particular motion. So this was a we had, is it the wish of council to have the motion reread? No, we're good. Everybody understands. Okay, then I will call the, call the motion. All in favor? That is carried. Oh, the mayor can't hear, apparently.
I can hear you, Phil.
I called the motion. Are you in favor?
Did you just call a vote?
Yes.
Okay, I'm in favor.
Okay, there was a majority in favor, so we're good. Okay. So item six point four. This is a Forster Maynard motion, reported the community services programs and initiatives dated May twenty-eight, twenty twenty, regarding cost recovery proposal for county-owned boat launch operations. Councillor Forster, do you approve the motion?
Very, Mr. Chair, I have to, I have to leave the meeting at this point for another meeting.
Okay, so then we'll need a second or an alternate second.
Would, would you like me to read the whole motion here?
Yeah, I'm going to give you councillor Bailey as your second.
Okay, the Forster Bailey motion, the council received report CSP twenty-five dash twenty twenty-four information and two, the council approved the purchase of Tango Play and Display Phone Payment Hosting and three Tango Credit Card Pay and Display Machines at a total cost twenty thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars plus HST as per quote. And three, the council approved amending parking bylaw according to forty-nine dash two eighteen by adding parking fees for boat launches. Details and attachment one and four, the council amend administrative penalty bylaw to include the bylaw buying schedule, which will add the non-payment of parking penalties of twenty-five dollars at all ten boat launches and two marinas with boat launch and that five council direct staff to change the operations of the Wellington Beach Boat Launch to personal watercraft only for the two thousand and twenty season.
Staff report.
Councillor St. Jean?
Yes.
And before we get started on the conversation, could you ask for a motion to extend the meeting beyond three hours?
Oh, yes. Motion to extend, please. Forster Harper, all in favor? That's carried.
Thank you.
Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir. So just to give you a sort of synopsis of this report, we were directed when we were sent to go away to present and to bring out forth the E O Y or express of interest for the Picton Harbor and Marina and Wellington Marina to come back and contemplate how we would be compensating or be able to collect money at the various boat launches. So the chief bylaw enforcement officer and I and some staff got together and, and discussed how we might go about collecting funds at the other boat launches and be able to bring enforcement with that. What we've, what we've provided to council today is the ability to purchase launching using pay and display meters, much the same as we use in the parking areas in Picton. I believe the report calls for either launches to be converted to either have the, have a pay and display unit with them for the busier launches and/or the ability to pay using an online app. This, the, I guess the other piece of this report is we're asking to turn the beach launch at Wellington change its use as it's being currently used for motorized vehicle, motorized boats to just personal watercraft. And that strategy is, is in the way that we feel like we may be able to get some control over what's happening at the Wellington Beach in terms of overrun, being overrun with parking. One of the issues we have there is that a lot of boaters come and launch their boats, boats on the beach side and park their vehicles in the beach parking lot, which then makes it inaccessible for beachgoers and causes a lot of congestion. And there's some significant health and safety concerns with people at the beach and in that area and then trucks and trailers and boats coming through to be launched when there is any, a launch on the other side that we are working with now, a third party to manage on our behalf. So I'm happy to take whatever questions you may have.
Councillors Bailey, followed by Forster.
Todd, take me through the difference between a pay and display phone payment and a credit card payment. I understand a credit card payment, you slide it in and away to go. With the phone payment, do you have to have the app?
I believe you have to, you will, you would have to download the app for parking for it to work. It's, it's, it's a pretty common way that parking is managed now in more urban centers. So it's nothing, it's not like we would be doing something completely unique. We would just be using it in the boat launch context as opposed to the general parking context.
So we would, we would have to make people aware of that upfront.
That's right. We require some investment and signage at the various, at the various launches.
Thank you.
And communications around that.
Councillor Forster, followed by Harper and Neiman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I am in agreement with most of the report and I like the idea of having a fee and a unit to basically monitor how people come in there. But one thing I would like to see, and I'm not quite sure the card pay and display is the way I'd want to go if I had the choice. Our most for our boat usage is on the weekends. And sometimes earlier in the morning, late at night where people pull boats in and out. One thing I'd like to see down the road is that we don't have to monitor this as much with bylaw officers coming in checking cars because there's a huge cost there up to that. So what is the possibility? You go into a lot of parking lots, unmanned parking lots in Toronto, you come in, you either use a credit card. In most cases, you put it in and the gate opens. And when you come back out, you punch in a code. This would be as simple, that would be, might cost a little bit more money upfront, but now we don't have to have bylaw officers patrolling the parking lots basically every Saturday and Sunday when it's the most time consuming and the most cost. So that was the only thing I'd like to look at, whether this takes a little bit longer. I mean, at this, looking at boat launches for nine years now, I'd rather spend one more year and make sure we put the right system in place. Some that doesn't have added costs at the end in, in management, staff management, because it seems like every time with the S T A's with everything else now, our bylaw office is going to be very busy. And this could be a very simple system with a gate. And you get a number that might be printed out. And then when you come out back your car and you punch in your number, the gate opens up, you move your car out to photo cells. It could be done very easily. And, and not required by lobster. So that's just a point there moving ahead. But everything else I'm okay with.
Thank you. Councillor Forster, points well taken.
Okay. Councillor Harper and then Neiman. Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Just to, one, just a little quick, quick explanation, then I did a little clarification from Todd on one part. So the idea of Wellington Beach and the not using the boat launch for motorized boats on the beach side will be an controversial decision. And it's a tough one because it is so well used. The problem is, is that we have another boat launch on the other side on Main and Belleville. And I think in the short time we've made this switch, I've seen the behavior changing and people are, we have to sort out, you know, how they turn around back in and get out. But for the most part, people seem to be adapting to it. So I'm encouraged by that. And I think that the staff's idea of let's, let's do this for a year, no motorized boats on the beach side for years, a way to do it. We're not making a permanent decision. And I think it gives us a chance just to gather a little more intel along the way and see how that's playing out. But certainly Wellington Beach, I can say, living close by that it's, it under, it's undergone a tremendous transformation in the last couple of years. And the amount of traffic that's going down the road truly is a hazard for the youngies that are, you know, getting in and out of cars and wandering and, you know, dogs running around and so on. So I think this is a good move. So safety really is a consideration. So it's, I think it's a good move. The one thing I just needed clarification, Todd, was so we're putting the, the meter or the, the or the, the, the meter, or the pay by phone act going on the beach boat launch, or is that going on the Belleville Main Beach launch?
The, what the.
Yeah, where are you charging them to launch their boat from the Belleville Main side? Or, because if we're closing it to motorized boating on the beach launch, you're really talking about just people putting their canoes in there, proposing that we charge them for launching their canoes or kayaks? I just wanted to get some clarification of what the thought was there.
I would.
I would anticipate, we didn't put a pay and play unit at the Wellington Beach side, and we may effectively decide if just putting in, if we're just going to move to personal watercraft in particular at that launch, then we may not charge people to put their canoes and kayaks in if we can contain everything to the Belleville Street side, and if we have negotiated a successful lease with a private third party to manage that site for us, then there would be no need for the display system there.
Madam C A O.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I switched with the phone. So, I, I would just say that we keep talking about this like we're paying for a boat launch with a parking machine, but what we're actually doing is charging for parking instead of launching, right? So, if we put it on the Marina, we're not putting it on the quote-quote Marina in, in Wellington, nor are we putting it in the Pickton Marina, but on this, the part where we currently call it a boat launch, but we would, for this year, only let personal craft, if we put a pay machine, that would actually serve for the Wellington Beechers, the people using the beach who are parking there, as well as anybody who wants to move their personal craft. So, it would allow us to basically create a parking space on that side of the beach area.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Nyman, followed by Counselor Margerson. Are you frozen, Brad? Not getting a re, Counselor Nyman? We're not getting you. It's a very good contemplative pose, but it's not working. Okay, Counselor Margerson.
Thank you, Counselor St. Jean. I, I did note that it was parking fees that we are proposing here, so is, I don't know a lot about all the parking capacity. Is there enough capacity at all these boat launches? Maybe Jamie knows. And for instance, at Wellington, would you have to pay then to park up at the corner of Belleville Street and, and whatever, Ashville Garden by the, by the community center? Is that how this is going to work? And I also thought that the, in, in number four of the motion, that the non-payment of parking penalties of $25, I didn't know if that was a typo, there was supposed to be a zero at the end of the 25, because we're trying to get people to pay, it's a very, very minimal fine, and even the parking fees, I thought were maybe a little for the day for a trailer and a, and a vehicle, $10, but I wondered if anybody had investigated that. So, the fees is what I'm looking at, and, and do we have enough parking capacity at these boat launches for, to get enough people in, or will they have to end up going off-site anyway after they launch? That's my questions.
So, to respond to a couple of, to, so there's a number of questions there, I will try and pack as best I can. To respond to the questions related to the Belleville Street side, so the, if we're talking about Wellington Main and Belleville Street, that would be a launch that, and Marina, we anticipate will be operated or is leased by a third party, it will be their responsibility to, and they could collect, they will probably charge launching fees in particular at that site. There is very little or no parking, we will have to put some signage up and move the boats, the trucks and the trailers off to the community center where we would not charge parking on that one.
So, we're not anticipating the Wellington as a revenue generator at this point, especially if it goes to a third party?
If it goes to a third party, the only revenues we would collect from that would collect in a lease.
But if it doesn't, we're not going to collect parking fees there anyway, is what you're saying.
Well, we have to come up with an alternative scenario and how we might deal with that site, which would maybe be a little more unique, because there is no parking or, or very, very limited parking on the Wellington side, on the Main Street side. With regards to the inquiries about the, the fees and charges related to parking, we deferred to the bylaw enforcement division to provide us with, with the, the, the fees, but that, nothing is, is, you know, I mean, we're giving you some options, but I, you know, we can always go back and change or modify those fees if you feel they're too low, which I got these, I get the sentiment that, as the heads are all shaking on the screen, that they are probably too low, and so we would come back with, with a bylaw that would probably look at a higher fee. Not probably, that will look at a higher fee.
Well, thanks, Todd. The, the reason I ask that is because we're proposing a fairly significant investment cap, like.
Yeah.
Startup investment, plus the, I, I don't know really what the cost benefit will be, because some of the more rural boat launches maybe just stay the way they are. It, it may be revenue neutral by time we do all the other things to try and get them to be paid, so that, that part of it, I'm not sure, but I hope that in the end, we can find a way that is, for the three perhaps busiest launches, perhaps there is a scenario that we can offset our costs, but for all of them, I'm not sure.
Well, and just to, just to sort of come back on that comment by, or to respond to Counselor Margerson's comment, we noted that there are 22 launches in the, in Prince Edward County, we're only suggesting making changes to 12. The rest would be, in those ones that we have made, we have suggested changes are the ones that have parking capacity at them. The rest would remain in the same, operate in the same fashion with an honesty box that we've always used, that is, is effective.
Okay, I have Counselor, I'm going to try Counselor Nyman again, now that he's popped back up, and if not him, then Counselor McNaughton.
Brad's still waiting to get in.
Okay, he's frozen on my screen as well, so Counselor McNaughton.
Thank you. I actually heard that. Part of your responses there just covered some of my concerns.
Do you really know?
Yeah, we can hear you. They related to fees and remote locations, so. I think Brad's still frozen, so I think you pretty much covered it. And perhaps another thought that when RFPs do go out for, for the actual units, that maybe we don't get the same ones that are in downtown Pickton.
Okay.
We'll explore all options, Counselor McNaughton.
So, I'm going to try Counselor Nyman.
I know you will, Todd.
Again. Okay. Oh. Counselor Nyman, can you hear us?
Can you hear me now?
You are, you are live. Go ahead.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
You hear me? Oh. I'm, oh, good. I couldn't hear one word. We're still on the boat, all right?
Having great difficulty getting your audio.
Hello?
Yes, Brad, go ahead.
Can, can you hear me or no?
Yes, keep talking.
Okay. We're still on the boat launch, right?
Yes.
Are we still on the boat launches?
Yes.
Okay. So, on the Wellington boat launch.
We've lost them again. Counselor Forster, I'm going to switch gears here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, one thing I would like to do, again, I'm okay with most of this, but number two, that we're looking to approve the purchase of the three Tango units, what I would like to do in the short term, and I've been asking this for three years, is to put three counters, vehicle counters at those launches to see what sort of usage we're getting, and that will tell us, and if we do it now, it'll give us a pretty good idea what kind of units we can put on these, these launches, and what sort of payback it'll be. And I still, and I'm not going to, I don't know why this hasn't been done yet, because as somebody mentioned, we've got launches, we don't know what sort of traffic we have, and we will never know what sort of traffic we have until we put meter or counters on them. So, I, before we do anything else moving ahead on this, I would like to see counters on those, those major launches that we will be having control over, and I'm sure we could do that in a week, and leave them up to the end of summer, and then basically bring this back into fall to look at, instead of trying to rush this through right now. We went through it for nine years without them, let's, let's do the right thing and make sure we have all the information to do correctly.
All right.
So, I'll be looking to defer this at the end.
Okay.
At least number two, anyway, sorry, number two.
Number two. Okay. Counselor Nyman is obviously still struggling. I half expect to see a fist come flying through the monitor. I'd like to give him the opportunity to speak, but it's becoming very problematic.
Can you hear me now?
Keep talking, Brad, go at it.
Hello?
Keep going, keep talking.
You don't have them.
Media's going to have a hate.
I'm trying, I'm trying to get in my phone.
Okay, call the clerk's office, then.
The clerk is helping him re-enter via phone the way I did, and just, in case anyone is interested, we, we have learned that there's some, shockingly, internet connection issues in both of our main internet connections, and it's affecting a large portion of the Belleville area as well.
Timing's. Systems. We want to give counsel, like I said, I want to be fair to Counselor Nyman, to give him his opportunity to speak. So, we shall wait. Well. Counselor Harper?
Well, we're doing, maybe just clarify with Marcia, our C A O, about, so your thought for, on the beach side of Wellington is there would be, setting aside Counselor Forster's point about the, the actual mechanism, is the idea to have one meter there that anybody who parks their car somewhere down on the beach area or near the launch, that they would pay, they would pay parking to be, to be down there? Is that the idea?
Yes, that's the idea, and I think that we need to have, over the next year, a bigger conversation about that Wellington Beach area. I think that's been on the docket to have a bigger conversation about it for a while now, but yes, we would have that up, and then there would be signage related to the McKay Pay App, so that it, because if you're a tourist and you're coming in, you're probably going to be quite comfortable paying electronically with your phone, so not, we wouldn't need a whole bunch of machines, we just need good signage about how to pay electronically, but also have a machine. So, that's the intention at that location.
And is that parking, charging for parking, is that a weekend thing or a seven-day-a-week thing? In the summer months?
We'd have to set that out in the bylaw that comes back, I'm not, I'm not sure, I don't know if Todd knows the answer.
And not.
I would also think, sorry, Todd, I was just going to say that there is also a parking study coming to council, committee of the whole, I think it is June 11th, but, but it's sometime in June, and so that is also where we can have a conversation about what our rates are, how we use them, how do we encourage a more effective approach, and deal with the deputation request that we saw for the Pickton B I A at council meeting earlier this week.
Thank you. But do you also have any further questions? Counselor Margerson?
Thank you, Counselor St. Jean. I just, I, what I understood is that we would have paid parking at the Wellington Beach, is that not just one end of the beach? Is that what I understood, is that correct? That, when you spoke before, Madam C A O, you said we were looking at paid parking at the beach, and we've talked about this before, but perhaps that's a bigger item that will be on the docket later.
Yes, it will come up again when we have this bigger conversation about parking itself and how much we're generating from parking, but, but the idea is to, to, if we're not using that space as an actual boat launch, then more of it will be used for parking.
But it's hard to delineate parking around that boat launch in the beach than it is parking anywhere down there.
That's right, so I think this becomes an option to have, you have to pay to park at the beach or, or around the launch, or what was, has been used as the launch, so yes, it's all of that would be now up for paid parking.
And we've never made any revenue from beach, the beach boat launch, have we? No. Or Al says no, so. So, we, we share that revenue with M and R if we ever make any, correct?
To respond to. To respond to Counselor Margerson, there's a good probability that we would have to share that revenue with M and R, but it would be something that we would investigate, absolutely, whether we would have to or not.
I think it's in the agreement right now.
I think you're right, I, if memory serves, it is, but I, I would be reluctant to confirm one way or the other, just having not, don't, not having the agreement sitting in front of me.
Thanks, Todd.
Okay. I'm assuming the phone call is Counselor Nyman, can you hear us?
I can hear, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, please go ahead and ask your question, sir.
Okay, thank you. So, the Wellington Beach side, so if we're going to close that, it is highly used, and we're going to try and put them all over to the other side, coming off of Main Street, what, what are we going to do about the parking? Because if you go to the beach side, you see the number of boats and trailers, and when you push all that, plus the ones that are already using the Wellington side, Main Street side, what are we doing with the parking?
To respond to Counselor Nyman's comments, the, what we would do is, is if we moved over to the Main Street side, we would redirect that traffic via signage, and staff who would belong to a third party directing that traffic up to the community center for parking.
Okay. So, we're going to take the parking, so the lot beside the. Arena is already being used to that, so then all the overflow, the rest of it's going to be at the arena.
Yes.
Is that, okay, and what happens in the event that, there's events going on at the arena, and there's no parking?
Well, there's. I mean, I, I don't know. I don't have, to be, to be honest with you, Councillor Nyman, I don't have a, I don't have a good answer.
State of emergency.
Councillor Harper, maybe you can assist.
Yeah, I could, a little, little bit of insight here. So south of the arena, there's quite a, a large area where we've already have signs where we, where we're hoping would park. They don't use that because it is a bit inconvenient. You have to drop your boat and, and drive up there. Lizzie, who's one of those people, does it six minutes, so she doesn't find, and they have found that the habit has formed easily, and so there is, there's not really that big of an inconvenience once you get into the groove of it. The thing is, the space that's there is quite significant, and I would argue there's more space there now than there is at the beach side. If you come there on a Saturday at any one time, there's maybe 10, 15 boats with trailers. That's the max you can handle. Well, you can handle more than that up by the arena, so the space issue is a non, a non-issue, frankly. It's really just the convenience or lack thereof, perceived lack of convenience, because somebody stays with your boat while you go ditch your truck and trailer, but it's, it seems to be a pattern that people are able to evolve.
Okay, can I, can I ask another question now?
Sure.
Thank you. And it might have already been asked, I'm not too sure, because I've lost connectivity and everything else, but, so I think that on the agenda, I seen it was $60 for the annual pass, and that's for anybody, right? Visitors or residents of the county, is that correct?
To respond to Councillor Nyman, yes, that was the, that was what we proposed in conversation with the bylaw, Chief Bylaw Enforcement Officer. The, the, what you may have missed is that the looks on everyone's faces indicated to me that that was under, that was, that price was too low. The individual rate, the, the annual fee and the fine was not deemed appropriate, and so when we brought back a bylaw, that, or we modified the bylaw for ratification, we were, our intention was to up those prices.
Okay, and I guess for visitors, I don't have a problem with that, but for county residents who pay taxes year-round here, and I've got a lot of comments from the local people who use those, should, should they be paying the same as the visitors, and I think that they should be paying less than the visitors. So I don't know if I have to make a motion on this now, or when you bring the bylaw back with the fees.
Madam CAO?
So, through you, Mr. Chair, to Councillor Nyman, and for the benefit of council, this report for you right now is to really figure out whether or not there's support for the idea of charging at boat launches in a different way, and moving to charging for the parking than the actual launching of the boat. But there is another report coming back to council in June that is going to look at how much we charge, where we charge, and whether or not we are appropriately charging residents and visitors. So that, those issues, you don't need a motion. That's already what we are bringing forward in that report. So I think there's certainly a timing question. Based on this conversation, I might suggest that we not rush the bylaw to come back to council until you've had the benefit of that parking conversation, because it seems the price of, and how we charge for parking is very intertwined with this one, so we might want to make sure you've had the benefit of that conversation, and then bring them both back to council together.
Okay, so I just want to make sure I understand then. So this one is just, we're just gonna pass whether we want to charge at the boat launches, and how are we going to regulate that, I guess, and then the fees will be coming back later on?
I didn't get the response, sir.
That wasn't the intention, but what I'm suggesting is maybe that's how we do it. So yes, if you read the motions that are part of this agenda today, we, we would need to bring back a bylaw that would set the penalties. We could look at perhaps Section Four of the motion, striking out the reference to the actual penalty costs, so that it's a little more generic. Then we take another committee of the whole meeting and have the conversation about parking and parking fees, and then come back to council with the, whatever bylaws are required to implement both pieces together.
So do we need a motion for that, or how's that work?
Clerk, could you speak to the process?
Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chair. If this is substantially changing the intent of the original motions, then we should do an amending motion, just so that everybody, it's clear and everybody's on the same page.
I would make that motion then, however you want to word it, Madam Clerk.
So we can work together right now in the wording with Madam CAO to make sure we capture everybody, but what I'm hearing is clause four, taking out the, which will add the non-payment of parking penalties of 25 at all 10 boat launches and two marinas with boat launches, correct? Eliminating that sentence?
That's correct. So it just says that we're bringing back a bylaw and a fine schedule.
Is there anything else?
Todd, do we have to change three as well, because that's speaking to the bylaw? I think that's just about making sure that we're amending it to include these. Maybe we don't. I rescind that. Never mind.
And typically, this wouldn't follow the, the due process. These bylaws wouldn't be coming back June 9th, it'd be coming back at a future meeting when the staff report is ready. Perfect. And that amending motion clarifies that. That's perfect.
So I need a second for that, right?
Could you, Madam Clerk, could you reread the amending motion? Because I do know that Councillor Forrester had planned on an amendment to the original motion, so I just want to make sure that everything is clear for all of us, including Councillor Forrester.
Okay, so the amending motion would read, moved by Councillor Nyman, that clause four be deleted in its entirety to read as follows. That council amend the administrative penalty bylaw to include the parking bylaw fine schedule.
Okay. Are you satisfied with that, Councillor Nyman?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, but you still need a second, or?
Yeah.
I see Roberts. Councillor Roberts is seconding that. Councillor Forrester, you've had your hand up for a minute or two.
Well, again, I was just looking at clause two, and I don't know how staff wants to word this. I would like to go back and look at alternative systems, and I'd like to have county meters put at the three launches. This doesn't have to be done this year, but like, I don't want to rush ahead. We've been trying to do this for years now, and I don't want to rush this ahead and not get it right, because I do not think this tangle playing just, playing display is the right way to go, and I do not want to add added burden onto bylaw officers having to control this on weekends. I want it to be a standalone system that people have to pay to use, and we don't have to check up on them. And in my own view, I think that would be the same thing, looking at Wellington parking coming in. Is it when you come in, I would rather see a gate coming in, you put your card in, and out you go, and we don't have to have somebody driving through there Saturday and Sunday checking windows to see that there's a little piece of paper on there, because people will take advantage. Let's make it foolproof and make, let's make it simple on ourselves. Whatever wording staff needs for that, that would be my recommendation there for boat launches.
Madam CAO?
Through you, Chair, Mr. Chair, I just want to clarify, the county has two counters, that's all. So are we going to put in some budget for us to buy some more counters, to do it at all 10 launches, or, and forgive me, I don't know how much a counter costs, but I know what they look like. So I just want to be clear what you're asking us to do.
Okay, if we only have two right now, then I'd suggest we put one on the Athol boat launch, and we put one on the Wellington Beach boat launch. Since we had so much problems with the Wellington Beach with non-payment, that I'd like to see exactly what sort of traffic we have in on there.
Sorry, that was Wellington, other one?
The Athol one. Athol, London Green Boat Launch.
Okay, I don't know about you, but I'm seeing a motion that's pretty much been rewritten and thrown in the air, and pieces of scrap, scrap pieces of paper put together to make a new one here. I, I'm looking to ask for some direction here, even though there's an amending motion on the floor, this is not clear at all to the chair, and I can't imagine it's clear to everybody here. So, Madam Clerk, I'm seeking your guidance on this one.
Through you, Mr. Chair, either amending motion that clause four be deleted in its entirety, and if Councillor Forrester, he would like to amend the motion that basically is the entire report.
Yes.
So if you, we should deal with, like, that one may be a referral to staff, and maybe the cleanest way possible, and that come back June 9th. I'm, I'm looking at the CAO and, and Todd, and I can't, because it's, it's substantially changing the intent of the report now, but it's up to, that might not fly. So Councillor Forrester, what I would suggest is you do a referral.
And that's what I was going to suggest, is a referral. Again, I spent every year talking about this for a long time, and I want to make sure we get it right. I can wait a few more months, and I think there's a lot of questions being asked today, and staff has heard a lot of the questioning or suggestions that we bring this back a little bit later. This does not be rushed in there this year at this time. Let's get it right, and let's make sure it's, it's the proper way moving forward, other than just taking care of the Wellington, the problem on the beach there that will make Al happy, and that is a problem area, but the rest of it doesn't have to be pushed through right now. So I would look for a referral on this.
Okay, Councillor Harper?
Yeah, I'm gonna agree with Councillor Forrester. It just, it feels like there's a problem with every, every segment. You know, the issue of, of the beach launch being for non-motorized boats anyway, that kind of meets the need for a counter, because we're gonna let them in there anyway this summer, so we're not going to get a clean read on that. I guess that's my only question, is do we have any heart for number five, which is to, is to just go with number five, and everything else has to be looked at, but number five is really about, for me, it's part of a test of, you know, the public's tolerance for the change. I think it's necessary, given the, the emergency that we're in, we're having trouble with, you know, controlling crowds anyway, so this to me makes sense regardless, because we need to control what's going on on the beach this summer anyway, so it's not a bad move for 2020. So if there's anything to be salvaged, it's number five.
Before I go to Councillor Margerson, I guess maybe I would suggest that the, the item number five be a standalone motion, and that the, and what I'm hearing is the balance be referred back to staff. Okay, Councillor Margerson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's exactly what I was gonna suggest. If we refer number one to four back to staff, and I'll second Councillor Harper's motion for number five to remain for this.
Okay.
To go ahead. Thank you.
So I'm, I'm gonna keep this in order before I go to you, Todd, and maybe the clerk can clarify this. Correct me if I'm wrong. So I have a, a motion to refer back to staff items one, two, three, and four on 6.4. Should we be voting on that first?
Correct. You should be voting on the referral of clauses one to four, and then Councillor Harper would make the motion for clause five to be standalone, and Councillor Nyman, I, I, we can't see him, but since he didn't have a second, or then his motion would die.
Okay. I think maybe this will satisfy Councillor Nyman for now anyways.
Well, I thought Councillor Roberts was the second for mine. We got three or four motions sitting on the floor here. I don't even know which one we're doing.
That's what I'm trying to clarify here. Would you be willing to withdraw your motion, Councillor Nyman, to allow this other to proceed?
And can you say that, so what, what motion are we talking right now, or which what motion do you want on the floor?
I'm asking if you are willing to withdraw your motion, yours and Councillor Roberts' motion, so that we can consider the balance of removing items one, two, three, and four, and, and voting separately on item five, if that makes sense.
So, and why are we doing that? I, I'm just trying to figure out what we're doing here, one, two, three, four, and what's happening to those? You're going back?
Refer back to staff.
Okay, then I'm okay with referring it back to staff.
And, okay, so then you are willing to withdraw your motion.
And what's number five? Because I don't have the agenda in front of me right now.
The council directs staff to change the operations of the Wellington Beach boat launch to personal watercraft only for the 2020 season.
Okay, yeah, I'm good.
Okay. Now that we've got that all clarified, who was it that made the motion to refer?
Forrester Bailey, Councillor Forrester, and I have Councillor Bailey, but I'm not sure if that's the correct second.
Okay, so Forrester Bailey motion to refer items one, two, three, and four back to staff. Okay, the only thing I'm gonna do is I'm gonna ask Todd if he needs any further clarification before I call the vote. Todd?
Through you, Chair St. Jean. I don't need any more, I don't need any more direction. I was, it's been pretty clear. There's been a bunch of direction. I'm not 100% sure you need to refer recommendation number one back to me, since that's just, that's just your report from us. I think the meat of the recommendations, two, three, four, are the ones that need to be altered or changed and re-contemplated, and then five is, is the direction that's gonna come out of this, out of this report at this time.
So, if I may jump in, just to clarify what the referral motion will read, because the report in its entirety minus save and accept clause five is being referred back to staff. So it does include still clause one, because you have to take your report, and then we have to approve it when it comes back, right? Because it's being referred, it's not, being referred back to staff for more information. So the, the motion would read that council refer report CSP-25-2020, save and accept clause five, back to staff for additional information.
There's one, everybody?
Yeah.
Good. I'm calling the vote. All in favor? Okay, that's carried. Now, we have the remainder of that original item, item five. Who was making that motion? Councillor Harper? Did I see your hand in the air?
Yes.
Seconder?
Margerson.
Margerson?
It was originally Councillor Bailey.
There it is. I see the yellow hand, yeah. Okay, any further discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor. Thank you. That's carried. Now, as if we haven't had enough fun, let's move on to item 6.5. Resolution by Councillor McNautin seeking council support for backyard chicken project for residential properties within Prince Edward County. Councillor McNautin?
Thank you.
Please go ahead and read your motion.
Thank you. This is a McNautin Hirsch motion, whereas member, or resolution, I should say, whereas members of council have received several inquiries regarding the possibility of allowing backyard chickens on residential properties. Therefore, council asks that staff investigate appropriate requirements for backyard chickens for residential properties within Prince Edward County, that the report outline necessary steps to facilitate backyard chickens and bring, to bring the existing flocks in our towns and villages into compliance for council to consider, and that the report be presented to council on or before the July 9th Committee of the Whole before the July 9th committee of the whole meeting.
Okay. Questions of staff? I'll go to Counselor Roberts, and then back to McNauton. Counselor Roberts?
Yeah, it's a kind of a continuing education, but it might be helpful for the public as well. Not only the deputation, but this discussion. The template regulations that we received included a reference to, I have two things, reference to livestock disposal, a livestock disposal facility. Do we have a livestock disposal facility? Or we?
Counselor Prinsen can answer that one, I think.
Since I, we do not, in Prince Edward County, have a livestock disposal facility. There is a dead stock service that runs from Tweed, but a lot of chickens and stuff could be composted in a backyard composter pretty easily. Is that your question?
Yeah, I just, that was it in terms of where will the dead chickens go to landfill with the green dead?
Sorry, if I could just add a little bit more, Counselor Roberts. My prediction is most of the dead chickens will probably end up with coyotes. So that's just my, my intuition.
All right. And the, the template motion also talked about manure being disposed in accordance with municipal bylaws. Do we have a bylaw that deals with manure disposal?
Anybody on staff wish to step into that one?
It's very funny.
I believe Counselor McNauton wants to speak, but I just want to be clear. We did not put the backyard hens, we're not putting it forward as a proposal model. It was what was recommended and came from the deputant. So we will do a proper report with full analysis. We're, we're not recommending copy and Kingston's necessarily.
Okay. Counselor McNauton?
That's exactly what I was going to say. And when there's an opportunity, I'd like to speak to this.
You have your opportunity right now, ma'am.
What's that?
You have your opportunity right now to speak.
Well, there you go. Perhaps Counselor Roberts, are you done? Are you, are you good? Okay. The goal here, and perhaps Counselor Hirsch can interrupt me if I'm incorrect, because he actually, he with one of his constituents, who you met earlier, Rachel, started this ball rolling. The goal here is to bring existing, existing hen houses into compliance. There are, and to allow others to join them. There are a lot around. I don't, we don't know how many, because no one's going to go to bylaw and say, by the way, I've got an illegal chicken house. But I will say, just for an idea, within probably 150 meters of, of my house alone as the crow flies, there are three flocks that I know of, and there could be several others. And there are several planned. But it is, as I think actually Counselor Bolick and, and Rachel spoke to the value earlier. It's, it's got tremendous values for food security. It's got value for education of children, and it's got value for, in this particular timeframe, a little sense of security that you're relying on your, that you can rely on your own backyard to feed you a little bit if, if things continue to be unpredictable.
Okay, I saw Counselor Hirsch's hand in the air.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, just to follow up on what Counselor McNauton said. We do need to regularize the situation. I think everybody, so far, what I've heard is everyone recognizes the value in allowing this to happen and to regulate it properly. But just as a matter of interest, there is a Facebook group called the Prince Edward County Backyard Chicken Group, I think, and that might not be the exact text, which has over 200 members. And if you ever have a little spare time and don't know what to do with yourself, you can learn all kinds of tips about raising backyard chickens. It is a big deal in the county. Most of it's going on completely outside of the law. So let's make this right, and let's get it right. And I support this 100%. Thank you.
Counselor Bolick?
Yeah, I'd just like to add, it's, it's not a way to save money, I'll tell you that much. So you can buy it, you can buy a dozen eggs in the store for a lot cheaper than raising them yourself, but there, there are a lot of other benefits to it. And as far as the other question about manure management, there is a requirement for nutrient management plan under Ontario legislation when you have a certain number of animals. And that's, that's the, that's the technical language, nutrient, not manure. But anyways, it only gets triggered with, over a certain number of larger animals. Six chickens won't trigger that, so.
Okay, before I go back to Counselor McNauton, is there anybody else which have any questions or comments? Okay, Counselor McNauton?
I do, I have to say more, but if anyone does have other questions, you've got chicken keepers on council that you can ask. Counselor Bolick, I've had hens in the past, and a rooster didn't go so hot. But, yeah, it does tend to be a great garden fertilizer. So if anyone's worried about chicken poop, I wouldn't.
Okay. I know we have manager of planning Paul Walsh here. So I would like to ask a question of Paul. Again, I guess it pertains to actually, maybe not so much you, is enforcing a bylaw once it is written. I, I guess I just need to know a little bit more about what's involved with changing, because this is the change to the comprehensive zoning bylaw, if I'm not mistaken, to, to address this as an extra use or an additionally allowable or permitted use. Can you enlighten us on anything to do, like how? What's the question I'm looking to have answered?
Provide some context if.
Sure. And have you had any experience, I guess, in drafting these kinds of bylaws?
No, I have not. I've, I've, I've never raised chickens myself. I've hung around farms quite a bit in my youth, but never actually raised, raised chickens. I've plucked some eggs here and there, but I haven't raised them myself. Had a took, took a quick look at some of the other municipal practices, and what's common is to do a licensing program as well as doing the zoning bylaw amendment. And it's usually a maximum of six hens. No roosters permitted, of course, because of the noise. I don't see any regulations too much on guinea hens, but guinea hens can make quite a bit of noise, too. I have observed some neighbors who are keeping different types of poultry. And you, you know, to my first observation, you'd never know they're there. So it seems to be fairly, very innocent enough. I have conferred with Public Health Unit as well in doing some preliminary research on it. They don't offer too many concerns. There are some Health Canada guidance as well. So I think all that kind of content would come forward in any staff report in response to the motion that council is considering.
Okay. Back to you, Counselor Bowler.
Thank you. I would just caution against, and then obviously the rest of council will have to agree, but I would caution against the licensing regime for this. It's not overly complicated. Six chickens, we don't want another STA bureaucracy for six chickens in the backyard. So let's keep it simple. What we may have to worry about is when you have chickens, you will attract every single coyote, fox, or possibly raccoon in the area. So that might be more of an issue for people. But let's keep it simple. Let's let people do what they're doing anyways. And like I said, I suspect, and Paul, you can probably, oh, well, you probably don't know, but bylaw would know, there's probably not a lot of chicken calls for bylaw.
You can respond if you wish, Paul.
As to the, to the chair, I, I did confer with the bylaw enforcement briefly on the question, and you are correct. There hasn't been a lot of call for follow-ups to the keeping of hens.
Okay. Okay. I do, I do have a few things that I, that I would like to raise that I'm hoping staff will look into as part of the development of a potential bylaw. And I'll start out with, you know, I personally don't have any problem with lands that are zoned RU. Anything rural, I personally don't have a problem with that, because I, I think that's, you're going to end up with appropriately sized lots and appropriate spacing between residential areas and residences. I struggle a little bit with the, the more built-up urban areas due to smaller lots, potential impact on neighbors. I personally don't want to be the guy getting the call and the complaints about roosters, even though they're saying that, you know, we're, we're talking no roosters. So I'm, I'm hoping that staff will, will consider that. Obviously, a limit is, is critical. And, and I think also whatever bylaw needs to be specific to state that it is only for chickens, not ducks, not peacocks, not guinea hens. I know there's a lot of them out there. And I think care needs to be considered with lot size minimums as well, as we would with just about any other zoning matter. And the final thing that concerns me, and it's already, well, not the final thing, but part of it was addressed in mentioning about public health, getting input from there. But I also think that, I don't think it should be a blanket in the more urban areas. I think neighbors should have a say. And, and I think we should be concerned with the density levels of them in the urban areas. There are some small back streets in Picton where I know there are chickens, and they are very tiny little lots. And the neighbors, you know, I haven't had any complaints yet, but when you start allowing something, you're going to get a lot more complaints. So I just like those to be considered. I'm not opposed generally to this, this bylaw, but I would certainly like to have those concerns considered when, when a bylaw is drafted. And if the complaints do start rolling in, I will forward all of the complaints to Counselor McNauton to address. So anyways, that's, that's all I'd like to say on the matter. Does anybody else have any questions of staff? Hearing none, we have a motion on the floor. I will call the motion. All in favor? That's carried. Speeding right along.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I may, can I, just, we've got, we are four hours in now.
Yes.
Five hours. We have two items remaining on the agenda. I'm particularly concerned about item 6.7. And I'm wondering if it might be wise to either move 6.6 and 6.7 to the meeting on the 9th. Probably get through 6.6. 6.7, certainly, the planning item is likely to involve fulsome discussion. So I'm wondering how members of council feel about moving that item to, in advance of the council meeting on the 9th for that discussion to be undertaken. So wondering what, what the opinion, and Madam Clerk, perhaps you can provide some guidance on this? If we move that, that item? And I have no idea how much time it may involve, but I think there will be a lot of discussion. And, and I think it's, it's worth dealing with when there is less fatigue and more engagement.
Just to, sorry to interrupt, but Mayor, are we recommending that it go to the 9th then as a straight-to-council item? Or that committee of the whole would sit for an hour before council to deal with it? That you have to?
I think this would go as a committee of the whole item, because I think there's going to be a lot of conversation about this. That's my opinion. Madam Clerk?
Through you, Mr. Chair. It is up to committee where they would like it to go. But if we have to make it a special committee meeting before the council meeting, I'd prefer it just to go straight to June 11th instead of council June 9th, because, for example, today, my office, me, had to do, I had to do three separate agendas. And now we have four separate sets of minutes. So the more efficient way would be to move it to June 11th or move it to June 9th council.
Okay, what, what is the, what is the feeling of council? I think, you know, more appropriately, it should go into committee of the whole for, for discussion. What does everybody think nod of heads would be appropriate at this point?
Can I ask one question?
Yeah, just to hang on.
I'm just going to go to you in a second, yeah.
Just want to see, I, I see, looks like everybody's nodding now. What's your question, Counselor Nyman?
And I might have missed, I missed half of what you said, because I had problems again.
Item 6 point, the last item on the agenda concerning.
6. Yeah, but what I was, what I was going to say is at 6.6, I, I was going to make a deferral motion on that. So it was back to the agricultural, to advisory committee, because there's more. When we had the discussion on that, at that, that was before the pandemic. At our last meeting, we were supposed to have more discussion on it. And I was kind of surprised to see that here. And I think Counselor Forrester was, too.
Counselor Nyman, we can't talk about that item. We can't talk about that item right now, because Counselor Prinsen has a conflict with it. But that is not the item the mayor's talking about. 6.7 is the planning report about the planning process. That's the one he's trying to defer either to next week's council or next week's committee of the whole. We're going to come back and talk about the cultivation grant once we finish this conversation.
Yeah, we're just talking about the planning, which is, I'm suggesting is going to require and needs discussion. And the indication I'm getting from the members of council, this meeting is to be added to the agenda on June 11th, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor, but I would, if that works, yes.
So June 11th, committee of the whole?
Perfect.
Okay, everybody's okay with that? Do we need a motion or a vote or anything?
Yes, we would.
Okay.
You're making that motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Seconder, please?
Counselor McNauton?
Okay. All in favor? That's carried.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, I didn't mean to usurp your responsibilities. It's just I'm, I'm mindful of the time and the amount of time that will be required for that particular item.
No, that's, that's a very good suggestion, yeah. While we're on the topic, we still have to go back into closed session, do we not?
No, we do not. We moved it.
Okay.
Done and dusted.
Good, okay. It's been a long day. Okay, so that means we are back to item 6.6. Correct, Madam Clerk?
Correct. Just making sure Counselor Prinsen's left, yep.
Okay. He's probably gone to milk the cows. Okay, so this is item 6.6, reported to the Finance Department dated May 28th regarding farming assistance grant program. Counselor McMahon and Margatson? Counselor McMahon, that's your motion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. McMahon, Margatson, motion that council receive report FIN-082020 for information, and that council authorize the staff to engage the county foundation to facilitate the awarding of the grant for the 2020 year, and that staff be authorized to issue $30,000 to the county foundation for the facilitation and distribution of the 2020 grant program.
Counselor Nyman?
Thank you. I got about three minutes before it cuts out again, so, and the phone hung up on me, so. I'd like to put a motion forward to defer this, because at our last agricultural meeting, it was, we had a discussion on it. And at our next agricultural meeting, we were going to discuss it further. But the pandemic, pandemic came, and we couldn't discuss it. We haven't had any meetings. And as I said, I'm kind of surprised it came to this meeting here, because the Agriculture Advisory Committee, and I think last year or previous, the council has gave direction to send it back to the Agro-, has the direction to send it back to agriculture. He's gone.
He was right, only a couple of minutes and then he's gone.
Committee to discuss it. So if, when the time comes, well, I think that.
Okay, so. Who have I? I've got councillor Roberts and then Forster.
I'm, I'm not sure if, if, maybe Brad and, and Jamie have seen it, but I circulated an amendment to the motion, which would have the grants awarded on the same criteria as twenty nineteen for this year, given the kerfuffle with meetings getting together and obviously the COVID nineteen pandemic. And also Brad and Jamie, that the foundation would be obliged in my amendment to engage and work with the Agricultural Advisory Committee to develop new qualification criteria for twenty twenty-one. So I didn't want to lose the twenty twenty grant year, but it's practically impossible to come up with new criteria this year, so we just apply the last year's criteria. And, and, you know, quite honestly, there are no farmers or agricultural economists on the county foundation staff or board. And the twenty twenty application of the criteria was part of our budget deliberations, which got approved, so it's also there as an expectation, I'm thinking, by the young and new farmers who qualify. And I also wanted to make sure that this, the staff motion doesn't reference engagement with our agricultural advisory committee, which is why I moved the amendment. Because the foundation is going to be disposing of, of taxpayers' money. And we have this agricultural advisory committee that is probably the best source of coming up with how efficiently and effectively that money is disposed to the grant process, so I'll just leave it there for now.
Councillor Forster.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, you know, respectfully, councillor Roberts, I'm going to ask why you are bringing this stuff forward. We have three council members who sit on this committee. I talked to the chair of the ag advisory committee yesterday, doesn't know how this got put forth without the two other councillors, three other councillors knowing anything about it, and I think you're sort of outstepping your bounds here. If you would like to take my seat on this position and the other councillors.
I didn't bring the motion forward, Jamie.
When, when you're doing stuff like this behind the scenes, talking to certain members of the ag advisory committee, not involving the chair of the ag advisory committee, not talking to the other councillors who sit on the ag advisory committee, and then put a motion forward, there was a lot of discussion this on this, at the last meeting.
Jamie, I, I, I put it out there for people to react to, not, not at the last minute, but just to, I got no reaction.
It would be sort of nice, councillor Roberts, if you actually consulted with the council members who sit on the advisory committee. And you would get full details of what the discussions were. And not talking to one member who had a different opinion than pretty much everybody else on the advisory committee.
Gentlemen, I'm going to step in. This is not the time or the place to, this is a discussion that can be held offline. This is a public meeting.
And, and that's why I'm discussing it online in a public meeting, because obviously, when things go on behind the scenes that I think are inappropriate, then where do we discuss it? Behind the scenes? So I would like this deferred back to the ag committee to let us finish off what we were doing.
Okay, so that would be a motion to defer until such time as the agricultural advisory committee has opportunity, has had opportunity to, to review. Is that what you're seeking?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay. Do you have a seconder for that? I see a bunch of hands, so.
You, you, Mr. Chair, actually, it was councillor Nyman and councillor Forster that brought this forward. So would Forster and Nyman like to move and second this?
Yes, that's what I gathered, so. I saw hands in the air, yes.
Yes.
So could you read the, the wording that you have for a motion, please, madam clerk?
Sure. So it would be that the report F I N dash oh eight dash twenty twenty be referred to the Agriculture Advisory Committee for their input. Actually, can I change that?
Sure.
So it sounds better. Okay. That report F I N dash oh eight dash twenty twenty be referred to the Agriculture Advisory Committee for input at their next meeting.
And their recommendation.
Okay, mover and seconder agree to that?
Yes.
Any further discussion? Seeing, hearing none, all in favor? That is carried. Okay, so we have six point seven off the agenda. Now we.
Fill in for Bolick.
Okay, so Markinson, ma'am. Oh, we don't, we lost, you know, councillor Bolick's there.
He's on a spacewalk, but.
Okay, so I needed a mover and a seconder to adjourn the meeting.
Yeah.
Who, who wants to do that?
Markinson, Maynard motion.
Councillor Maynard's not here.
Markinson, Forster motion.
There we go.
Meeting to adjourn at five fourteen PM.
Okay. All in favor? All in favor? I didn't think anybody would oppose that one. Okay. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.